When we seen the neighbors go to the courthouse, but I don't know if she was smart enough to go ask where to go.
Oh, okay.
We went and asked Kayla White, actually, I know her very well.
Okay.
She directed us this way.
Perfect. Sounds good. Good that some folks know where to go, huh?
Kinda.
Where to send you, I guess.
All right. How are you, David?
Doing great. How are you?
Doing good, doing good. I guess we'll get this going here. All right, so I'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to come to order. It's 2:01 November 10, 2021. I have John Spiegelberg here with me at my house. And then I believe Mr. Kennedy, I see that he's on the participants list, so I was a little, didn't know if he's gonna be here today. So anyways, let's get going. Will the secretary call the roll? Mr. Wellness.
Oh, you want me to do it?
Mr. Wellness, would you go for us, please?
Mr. Hinckley.
Here.
Mr. Spiegelberg.
Here.
Ms. Hanning. Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Chairman Moore.
Here.
And Ms. Hanning is here.
Yes, I am here. I apologize for my technical problem.
All good.
Thank you, Mr. Wellness. All right, great. We have everybody here today. So we won't need to excuse any member. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda for the October 13th? No, that shouldn't be October. So approval of our agenda today, the November 10, 2021 meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review our agenda for today's meeting?
Kennedy, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, do we have a second? I would show a second. Okay. I guess go ahead and call roll for this. Mr. Hinckley.
Hi.
Ms. Hanning.
Hi.
Mr. Spiegelberg.
Hi.
Mr. Kennedy.
Hi.
And Chairman Moore and myself, I. So the agenda for today's meeting has been approved. Item number four, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes for the October 13th, 2021 meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, just a comment. I'd like to congratulate Joe and and David on putting together a very comprehensive set of minutes. So those are getting a little more a little bigger each day, and I realize that takes some time, but I think it's appreciated. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley, for your comments. I'd agree too with you.
And I'll move to accept the minutes while I'm at it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Okay, so we have a motion to accept our minutes. Do we have a second?
Kennedy, second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We'll go ahead and call roll. Mr. Spiegelberg.
I.
Ms. Hanning.
I.
Commissioner Kennedy.
I.
And Commissioner Hinckley.
I.
And Commissioner Moore and myself, I. So motion carries. Move on to item number five disclosures. The chair calls for any disclosures to be known relating to any of the applications that we have today. Is there any disclosures that anybody would like to or feel that they need to bring forth to the other members of the commission?
Kennedy.
Oh, go ahead.
Kennedy here. I am where I believe I will have good cellphone coverage, but if I drop off, I will join back as soon as possible. But if you don't hear from me, that's why. I just wanted to let you know and didn't think you wanted to hear the road noise.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any disclosures, Mr. Spiegelberg? None, none from you. Ms. Hanning?
None.
Thank you. Mr. Hinckley?
Nothing here. Thank you.
Thank you. And myself, Chairman Moore, I do not have any disclosures for this meeting. So being as that there's no disclosures, we'll get going and moving forward with public applications. And before we do that, today's discussion will be conducted in accordance with the state statutes, the rules of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask individuals who want to address during the public during the public comment period to raise their hand on the participants list, which is on the right-hand side. If you look at on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand, and certainly we will call you. And then identify yourself and state your your address, and we'll let you speak. And so we'll try to give everybody the opportunity to speak and talk, you know, comment on on their thoughts. So with that being said, we'll move into public applications. The first public application that we have today is the Powell zoning change application, which is LUC dash 08 dash 21. So David or Joe, whoever's gonna present this, go right ahead.
All right, the applicant is David Powell. It's located about 18 miles from Laramie down Highway 230. The request is to change zoning from agricultural to rural residential. Current use is vacant. Access will be off of 230. There were four reviews. The county assessor, county engineer, and Fire District One Chairman had no concerns. Wyoming game and fish recommends minimizing the construction of new fencing. But if fencing is constructed, it should be built using wildlife-friendly specifications. She also had comments on the Wyoming code, and the full comments can be seen in the review section. Notice has been provided by posted signed publication and certified mailing as required. The advocate has provided the required site plans and/or survey. All the advocate has addressed all potential impacts. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval as listed in this report are incorporated here and as findings of fact. Conclusions of law, the advocate is proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Our staff analysis is that the applicant has provided a complete application and has addressed potential impacts this use may cause. The property is owned agricultural. The applicant wants to subdivide their property into 20, a little bit larger than five acre parcels, which will require approval of this land use change and a subdivision application. The applicant will need to follow the Albany County wastewater regulations for new septic systems and turn in a zoning certificate application for all new buildings on the lots. Staff recommendation is to approve the Powell land use change application, LUC 0821, based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Wellness. Appreciate your information on this. I guess at this point, do we have any questions from the commission for staff? Mr. Kennedy?
None.
Mr. Spiegelberg?
None.
None from you. Ms. Hanning?
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you, Mr. Wellness. I have a quick follow-up question just from this being in front of us before. I guess so now it's changing to rural residential instead of small lot residential, and I appreciate that the applicant addressed one of the concerns that was being discussed by by changing that land use change designation. But I just wanted to verify that 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 is the change before us. And so I guess it just brought up a procedural question of we, this was tabled. Does it need to be taken off the table and withdrawn and and resubmitted as a new request with new public noticing? And I know you can you can waive the fee so that there's not an increased burden on the applicant pertaining to the permit fee. But I'm just wondering procedurally, did we did we dot the t's dot the i's, cross the t's? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes, Keith, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I guess my comment there and staff certainly can comment, but I and I don't have the minutes in front of me, but my my remembrance was that we tabled this definitely till this meeting. So I don't think there's any issue with that, but I could certainly stand to be corrected.
I I think we simply tabled it, was my memory.
That's correct. And Ms. Hanning, thank you for bringing that up because that's a great topic. Do we have our, I see Mr. Ayers, are you available?
Well, why don't we just preempt the question? I will move, take it off the table.
So thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Is that, so, Mr. Ayers, are you available?
Yes, Chairman Moore.
Um, so pertaining pertaining to Ms. Hanning's question, as far as doing this properly, last month's meeting, we did table the application, which at that point, the application was to rezone the property to a small lot residential. And so what would be the procedure that we need to follow? Because we have this application in front of us with a change in what the applicant is asking for. So with what Mr. Hinckley's and Mr. Kennedy's assumption is, is do we need to make a motion to take it off the table? Or do we, can we do that? Or do we need to do something else with the other application? What would be your recommendation to us?
Well, it looks like David has his hand up.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gertz, what would be your recommendation that we do?
Okay, so honestly, the application that was tabled previously is not what's before you today. The applicant resubmitted an application and redid the whole notice process. So all of that has been done. This is a totally new application. So that which we tabled last meeting is is null and void. So it's really a moot conversation here, so.
Okay, so procedurally, we don't have to worry about that application because this is a new application, and we can forward with this one, not having to do anything with the other application, correct?
Correct. I mean, the the second application, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's it's a new application. I mean, they they brought us a new application with a different request than what was before you before, so. Maybe I don't know what you have to do to get it to go away if it was tabled, but.
Okay, I'm just wondering if it's appropriate that before we get into this new application, that we don't have another application out there that's tabled that, what would we have to do to withdraw that application? Or can we leave it tabled? And does it expire? I mean, I think that we have obligations to address that application.
I think since the the application was withdrawn, it was previously before you, then it doesn't really matter because it doesn't exist anymore. It was withdrawn.
Okay, okay. So after we after we tabled it, the applicant withdrew that application?
Correct.
Okay, very good. So if that's the case, and that's the understanding that we have, then I think it's appropriate we move forward. But great question, Ms. Hanning. And again, I'll give, since we don't need to do anything, I'll give it to the floor to you, Ms. Hanning, and to ask staff questions. Mr. Hinckley, go ahead.
Just just because I made a motion in a second, I will withdraw that motion formally. Thank you.
And the second concurs. Thanks.
Dot those t's.
Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Great. Now we're all in line. Ms. Hanning, back to you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Address the commission for yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, sorry about that procedural goose chase. And I should have looked to see if the numbers changed because most aspects of the application looked looked so similar. I wasn't I wasn't sure. So I apologize for that. I guess a couple other follow-up questions to see if if additional information has come in over time. Has there been any more information that you're aware of, Mr. Wellness, regarding obtaining the city water and working with the city to to get that agreement?
I might have just put it in the subdivision packet, but there was a letter from the city basically outlining what she needs to do in order to obtain the city water. That was sent from the city.
Okay, thanks. I'll look through the packet and see if I can scroll down to that. I also noted that we we had new information from state game and fish. It looked like their letter was dated. I don't, it didn't make it into the previous packet, but it made it into this one. And I just wondered what your what your thoughts were about the the recommendations from from them.
I have no problems with it. You guys can put that in your motion if you want to require that.
Okay, I guess the the last question I have on Mr. Chair and Mr. Wellness regarding some of the concerns that came up in, I think it was Mrs. Pratt's letter regarding, you know, some some of the the things that could happen down the road if the zoning change goes through. If if the city does not give this this subdivision water, which which I think could be kind of a tricky engineering thing because there's there's no head in the system at this point, and the gravity flow, there's there's really, I don't think there's a lot of pressure in the system because it's so close to the release at the the water treatment plant. So the the engineering of this, in my mind, is is something that has to be shown. And and so if if all of the stuff with the city falls apart, or you know, the the costs of doing that kind of pressurized system are just prohibitive for lots, people are willing to travel 18 miles out of out of Laramie for. And so so now now the potential exists if it's rezoned to have people go seek their own individual private wells. And and I'm just wondering what kind of impact. It sounds like it's pretty shallow alluvial water that they have to go off there. If if her well is only 65 feet deep, I don't know a lot about the actual specific geohydrology there, but but it, there's a lot of questions in my mind about impacts to existing water users out there with this water piece not being further further along the negotiation line. Because I, as as I think everybody here knows, I I have a lot of issues with making zoning changes without really making sure that that everything is in in place ahead of time. I I know I I liken that to putting a baby in the bath water to find out what the bath temperature was, and and I and I still feel that way. Because once this is rezoned rural residential, it opens up the possibility for someone to apply for a conditional use permit to put three mobile homes out there. And so there's there's ramifications for this decision. And and I I support growth. I when I sat on the City Planning and Zoning Commission, I I voted in favor of Thrive Laramie, and I voted in favor of a lot of increased density housing projects. And I was also a member of the Housing Action Team. And so I'm I'm very sympathetic to the need for housing in our community. But I'm also sympathetic to wanting to make sure we're putting it in the right locations. And that when we make a zoning commitment and make a change, that we we really know what everybody is in for. And I I don't feel in this case that that all the information is in front of us to make that decision. And and I I I'm wondering about tabling this one until the applicant can bring in more more, a little more of the meat to the project to show that the way she invasions this can really go down that way because once it's zoned that way, you know, it everything can just, it's it's the horse is out of the barn. So I'm sorry to go on, and I don't know if there was a question you can answer in there. But I but I'm wondering about these loose pieces on the water system primarily. Thank you.
So what I would say is that what we're looking at right now specifically is the land use change. Next is the preliminary plat. And all that would have to be taken care of before the final plat. So we would know before the final plat. Maybe David has more to add on to that, but all that comes before the final plat.
I guess the one thing that I would note is that the zoning change that's being asked for is rural residential. There's no requirement for water to be provided by a centralized water system. Typically, in this zoning type, you're gonna see well and septic. So this this is actually an anomaly, the fact that they're trying to get city water for this subdivision. I've never seen this happen for a, you know, a zoning zone, something that's zoned rural residential. So it's always been wells and septics.
Thanks, David and and Joe. And I I agree. I I want to commend the applicant for for having the idea of using city water. Because in in the effort to locate housing and finding places with suitable water, looking along the water main and trying to work with the city seems like a good direction to go in. So I I I just, like I said, for me to really understand how the project works, especially in the in this sort of wetlands area, along a irrigation ditch, I I'd like to know more about the overall water. But but I appreciate what you're saying about the overall rural residential zoning. Mr. Gertz, thanks. Thanks a lot. And Mr. Chair, I'm all done with my questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for staff?
No, I don't. Thanks.
Mr. Spiegelberg, do you have any questions for staff?
I just had kind of a side thought here. There's something in my memory that keeps cropping up that the city of Laramie obtained a easement for that water line clear up and down that highway area. And it looks to me like it's kind of puts Powell in a position that she's got got in a way a right to get get some of that water. I don't know what the agreement is between the city and and the the easement for that water line. But it seems to me like it it shouldn't just be a one-sided thing for the city. When you give somebody an easement, it looks to me like there's also some other consideration that should come about. I'm not that familiar with it. I don't know if Tammy is on the listening end of this or not. Maybe she could clarify that for us. But it looks to me like a an easement was granted for that water line coming clear from the treatment plant, clear to clear to Laramie. And it's not just that particular piece of property. And there's other properties up and down that whole highway that have been given city water. So I think there's been some precedent set already.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegelberg. Did you have a question for staff at all?
No.
Mr. Hinckley, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And my my first, I guess, the question, I I continue to try to reconcile our staff reports with our zoning regulations and I think that connection can be made quite a bit tighter. Now, I appreciate that Mr. Ayers is on this on this call. For example, Section 5 F 3 A says, the applicant, we have to make specific findings to approve these things. And I'd like to see us make those findings in a in a fairly clear way. The proposed zoning change is compatible with existing land use of surrounding properties. That's a that, like all of those, A through G, appear to be kind of yes, no, no questions. So when I look at the staff report under A, and it says would not have a huge impact, I guess we're going to infer that the staff conclusion was that it is, in fact, compatible. But I would like to hear the staff say that, if that is their conclusion. And if they don't know, and they want to kick it to us, then we are the ones who are charged with making that finding. Another example at E, natural and environmental resource impacts, what the rules actually say there is the we have to find that the proposed zoning change will not result in significant adverse impacts to natural and environmental resources. So what I'm seeing on the staff report is not a finding. It doesn't address whether or not the proposed zoning change will result. What it has is a remark about wastewater. So at the end of these, we we have our our formulaic based on findings of fact and conclusions of law. And so I ask myself, well, what are the findings of fact that we are endorsing? And I I find these to be fairly ambiguous, or or in some cases, off point. So it's a procedural question for staff, and maybe my problem could be remedied orally by just having you guys walk through these and with the reference to the actual regulations. And and let's clear up, when you say no huge, are you saying that's a yes? When you, when it says wastewater will need to be dealt with, is that a finding that there will be no significant impacts to natural resources? So what 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 do you what do you think of that, Mr. Wellness and Gertz?
Yeah, if you would like more information on these, we can definitely provide that.
I want to know your finding in relation to the rules that we have in front of us.
I mean, most of them say that the applicant is has addressed this impact. So all of those that say that, that's basically confirming that, yes, it's followed the rules. It's followed what is required.
Okay, so for, let's just use that example of natural environmental resource impacts. So you're telling me we should read the staff response as a, yes, the proposed zoning change will not result in significant adverse impacts to natural and environmental resources.
Well, honestly, these are, these responses are for you to make a determination. I mean, this is this is for the planning, zoning, and the board of county commissioners. Staff doesn't have to make that that, you know, finding that these things are are all great and good. I mean, that's what your job is, is planning and zoning commission. You know, do we need to provide you more information? We definitely can, and I think that would probably be helpful. And and I and I get what you're saying with this one because it doesn't say specifically that we've addressed the impact. But with the information that we received, the only thing that, you know, we're just worried that You know, we're just worried that we wanna make sure that not the wastewater systems are installed as they're supposed to be. Um, because that would impact the water and and the quality of of the land out there, so.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chair, through you, um, I understand that and I guess by parsing this would be that. I mean, we're basically standing in for the board of county commissioners here. We don't make the final decision, but we recommend to them, but we're we're looking at the same set of rules, so. Staff can come to us with a recommended finding. Or staff can come to us with a a discussion of what's this way and what's that way and we will make that finding. But the document that we have in front of us, I would argue, is is not ripe for. If we were to just say, we approve this based on these findings. I don't know what those findings are because there aren't findings here that are required for approval as per the regulations. So somebody, whether staff or this body, I think have to articulate. Clear answers to the required findings. So if at the end of this conclusion, we were to say we move for adoption of this zoning change based on the findings of fact conclusions law. I I don't think there's findings of fact articulated that lead us to that conclusion. So where does that leave us? Maybe it's a question for Mr. Ayers.
I uh, sorry, Chairman Moore.
Yes, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, Commissioner Hinckley. I I agree that findings of fact and conclusions of law do need to be made. Uh, those can even be articulated verbally as part of the record. Um, they do not necessarily have to be written. Uh, you are correct that the ultimate authority does lie with the planning and zoning commission for making those um findings. Uh, that is something that's been specifically delegated under statute uh from the county commissioners. Um, if you would like to see more written. Um, I suppose that that is something that the planning office could provide, uh, but. There are ways of, I suppose, doing this in the meeting.
O- okay, Mr. Chair, and I'm I'm simply preparing us for the motion at the end of this discussion, so uh maybe the question goes back to that. If we were to simply vote I to approve this based on the findings of fact here and incorporated. Would that satisfy the the regulation? My my hypothesis is that no, it would not. Without somebody articulating in the motion, perhaps verbally is fine, what exactly those findings are? Do we need to say that in the motion, given that it doesn't say that in the written report?
Uh, Mr. Hinckley, I think that um, I mean, I understand what your point is. And what you're trying to say here, but I think that the big misconception right now is is what we're looking at is we're looking at a zone change only at this point. We're not looking at the plat, that's the next application. Um, and if we look through here and we see the findings necessarily for necessary for approval. Um, and we go through them and we see what the applicant's response is, we see what the uh staff's comments are. Um, in my eyes, and what my view of of this is, is is that uh, yeah, there are facts, there there are facts of what. The applicant has responded to staff's comment on that. And, you know, in the past, and, you know, the nine years that I've been on this commission and uh is enough. In writing to to uh either find an approval. Or if one of those things isn't met, and that's at our discretion. And I think if we look back at other things that have gone through, some things haven't passed, some things have for certain reasons, whatever they are. Um, I think what you're asking for is uh. Do you want instead of a staff comment, do you want just them to say yes, or do you like the fact that like under number? Uh, uh compatible compatibility with surrounding properties. Uh, would you want, yes, it meets the regulations? Is that how you want staff to write it, or do you want, you know, what they have written here? It changes owning in this area would not make a huge impact. To what priority or growth area three is stated. I mean, I think all we're talking here is just uh uh. Twisting words around when we've got right here in front of us what the applicant who owns the land is asking for a zone change. Now, we know down the road, we're gonna get an application, and I think maybe some of these questions that Miss Handing has and even yourself. Uh, are gonna relate to that, but when we're looking at. Um, just a zone change is all we're looking at at this point, so. We could certainly go through all these. I've read through my packet, I mean, I've read through it. A couple times and I have no problem with the applicant, the owner of the land, asking to change their zoning. And so I guess the point of it is, is is it something that can be done? Is your question and 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 I'm asking you a question and you respond to that. Is is your question is, would you like to see a different s- staff response? In our packets?
Um, well, my point, Mr. Chair, and and is is a is a procedural legal one. I'm reading the regulations for the Albany County for a zoning change and I understand that. That there are many more complications that come in with a specific proposal for a subdivision, and that's a second bite at the apple. But I'm reading findings necessary for approval. Must make the following findings, A through H, so I'm I'm simply asking. I think the ideal staff report would be to discuss each of those items and whether they're. Whether they there is economic impact or not, whether there is need for buffering or not. And then if the staff feels that they can come to a conclusion that they're wrong to recommend to us, I think that's a valid staff function. Uh, so sure, if and I would defer to them if if uh our planning staff thinks that that. Uh, that we should explicitly find that the proposed zoning will not result in significant adverse impacts. I'm quoting directly from our regulations, then I would appreciate them saying so. And if they don't want to find that, but would give us the information and ask us to make that finding, that would be fine. All I'm saying is that. We need to come out of these discussions with a response to the required findings that are listed in the regulation. Each one. Um, now, the last one before I see David's got his hand up, but then. Uh, Commissioner Hanning's point goes to the last item H where we must make the following finding. That impacts to public services uh that they're adequate to meet the needs of the proposed zoning change. That that I think is along the lines of what Commissioner Hanning was asking. Can we affirmatively make that finding based on the information we have in front of us? And if the staff has enough information to recommend to that, I have no problem trusting their judgment, but we need to hear it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Hinckley, so I guess I don't, I'm not understanding um you uh from the standpoint of the fact that. Item H impacts on public services, utilities and public facilities, applicant response, there. Should be no impacts to public services, utilities or public facilities due to the zoning change. And then staff comments underneath that say the applicant has sufficiently addressed this impact. That's a finding of fact. This is a zone change. We're not talking about the subdivision. We will see that subdivision and in their comments, if they're not sufficient. In that in that application for that plat to actually split that land and create lots. Then absolutely you're correct, but what we're looking at right now is a zone change and so that is fact right there. Uh, a zone change does not impact public services. A zone change does not impact utilities or public facilities. That's a fact. And so the law, the regulations we have, that's net and this, we have these packets, we're giving these packets a week in advance. To read through them and to see that the responses that the staff has have been made and so. I I guess we can have some discussion, maybe we should add this at maybe next month's meeting or or even later today. But as far as fulfilling the need for the finding of fact, this is sufficient. Our packet provides it and I feel comfortable in that with this application and so. Um, but we could bring that up and have more discussion, but we are taking time. We have applicants that are are sitting here in our meeting. And this time that we're at right now should be more focused towards facts of the zoning change and questions for our planning staff. And so um with that being said, Mr. Kennedy, um, do you have any questions for staff regarding this zone change?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and at this point, I don't either have any questions for staff. Um, with that being said, we'll move on to um the applicant or applicant's representative. Um, if the applicant or applicant represent representative wants to. Uh, address this commission, this would be your opportunity and I'm sure you've been listening. If there's anything that you would like to add or that hasn't been added by staff, uh certainly we would be more than happy to hear it.
So do do I need to raise my hand or can I just speak?
Um. Uh, Ms. Powell, you're just fine. You go right ahead. You're the applicant and this is your.
Okay.
If there's anything you'd like to add or address that we've had questions that staff hasn't answered, um, now would be your time, if you'd like.
Okay, so thank you. Hello, everyone. Um, I've been taking some notes and um, Ms. Hanning, just I I. I understand your concern about water, but have you seen this property? Have you have any of you gone out and looked at this property?
I I've driven the corridor often and I can picture Harmony School in in my mind.
So then you know that that irrigation ditch that goes through there does not serve my property.
Of course, no, a lot of irrigation ditches that our county hosts um serve elsewhere.
Right, so so just so you know, that irrigation ditch that goes through and I and and you brought this up, so I just wanna answer your question here. Is that ditch serves eighteen landowners to the east of me, so the only. Benefit that this land gets is stock water and that table by Harmony is dry. Um, it it's just dirt. I mean, like I said in the letter where I withdrawn, I formally withdrew. Drew the small sub- small track subdivision because again, I did not realize that what 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 was going on and that is not my intention for this, so. This land, it doesn't support cattle, it doesn't, it's for golf, it supports gophers and it might support some antelope a little bit. But so just wanted to make sure that you knew that about the irrigation ditch. Um. Your your point about wanting to see more with the city. The pump I have to put in is co- is close to three hundred thousand dollars. I am not about. To get that, I mean, I've hired coffee engineering to engineer that pump and get what's necessary. Based on what the city tells me, but I am not gonna spend that money until I get land use change in the preliminary plat. I can't. Um, it's my intention, you know, the city's not gonna let me use that line, which I gave an easement for. Because when I bought that property, the city didn't even have an easement. I, you know, I'm a title girl by by trade, forty years in the business, so. When I bought that property, I knew there was a city water line going through there, so I gave them an easement. And Mr. Spiegelberg's exactly right. When I gave that easement, there was talk about, I have one tap off of that line already to my land, you know? So anyway, I just don't wanna get the cart before the horse because I I don't have that kind of money. And so the city's not gonna let me tap in unless I do it exactly the way they want it. And I intend to do it exactly the way they want it after the county says, yes, we believe. That you're going in the direction that we want our county to go, so hopefully that. Answers a little bit more of your question about why there isn't more. I mean, I asked the city to give me something, but that's all that Brooks could give me. Cause he's not gonna give me a carte blanche. Hey, you get a tap into our line, you know? So do you have any more questions about that that I could answer for you directly?
Um, thank you so much, uh, Ms. Powell, for for your information and. And I I certainly wouldn't expect you to go out and drop three hundred thousand on a on a pump without having this lined up. I'm, I guess the assurances that I'm looking more for are like um seeing the covenants. Um, created and and filed onto the deed that will take care of the wildlife concerns and. And and fencing and so some of these things that the neighbors are concerned about uh without buildings, et cetera. Um, I I guess any any of those little paperwork pieces that can be put in place. That that I think are probably a lower financial um output than capital outlay at this point. Um, you know, starting to to actually form the water district. Uh, those those types of things, I guess, would give me more reassurance that. That there won't be a big change between your preliminary plat and the final plat should. Uh, a property transfer occur or or any anything that could happen in the world of trying to develop property. Um, that it it would give me a greater assurance that there wouldn't be shocking changes from what you're proposing today. To what could come in in a final plat, so so I'm looking for paperwork. I guess paperwork type things, not capital outlay. Thank you.
So, um, in response to that, you know, covenants are something that are personal to me. There, that's not a part of the planning commission, so even if I had the covenants. I probably wouldn't share them because that is not what's going on here. That's not where we're at in this process. If and I'm not trying to be snarky, but you know, if if the regulations said. Applicant, you have to have covenants at this meeting, I would have them and I would have them ready for you to review. But I can't start the water district until I have the lots, the what, have you looked at the statutes regarding the formation of a water district?
I have not delved into those statutes and I'm I'm sure that they're not minor at all.
Right, and so I'm not trying to be disrespectful in any way. I'm just trying to make sure that. My cart is before my horse, that that's all and I I can assure you and I hope you could tell by the tone of my letter that. I am not gonna do something that I'm not gonna change that. I mean, I own two hundred and fifty acres adjacent to and south of that. I'm not. Going to come to this commission and say, oh, this is what I want and change it later. I'm I'm I just wouldn't do that. I'm just, I'm just not that way.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. I appreciate all your your information.
Sure, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions that I could uh directly answer?
Uh, Ms. Powell, we'll go ahead and I'll just go ahead and ask everybody. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for Ms. Powell?
None, thank you.
Mr. Hinckley, do you have any questions for Mrs. Powell?
Uh, just a a quick comment. Thank you, Tammy, for your patience. My my concern in the earlier discussion, we'll come back to it, is that that we give you a clean. And definitive uh motion when we get to the end, so uh. Yes, it's a procedural question, but I appreciate your patience with that and I also would echo Commissioner Hanning's appreciation that you've come back to us with a. A you know, uh rural residential rather than small lot residential. So I think we're making good progress and I fully agree with you that this is a zoning change and we can't solve every problem at this stage. Things do need to be brought up in in due course and the zoning change is what. Allows you to proceed in good faith to put your subdivision together, so I'm perfectly happy with addressing it as a zoning change. So again, thank you, Ms. Powell, for your for your good work here.
Mr. Spiegelberg, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Oh, kind of an indirect question or comment. I uh, I don't think this commission. Uh, should start critiquing the uh staff of the planning and zoning office. They put a lot of work in them. Tried to feed us that all the information they can in summary and it's always accurate. And I've always found that if I have a question before the meeting, so I don't have to drag the meeting out on. On splitting hairs and so forth, I go down and I ask David Gersh and or his assistant. They've always been more than cooperative in in being completely open and candid and and answering any questions I have. But I think it's wrong if if I don't think it's this sports or this commission's. But I think it's wrong if, if, I don't think it's this sports or this commission's function to critique the. Uh, planning and zoning commissions, uh, uh, director down there when he sends their packet out. They've gone through a lot of work already. I just, I, I, I find, I just find this unnecessary to sit here and critique. The information they give us. I don't think that's our function.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegelberg. And no questions for myself, uh, for you at this point, uh, Ms. Powell. Um, and thank you. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to the public. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on the zoning change. Um, if you would, on the right, you can bring up the participants list and raise your hand. I'll certainly call. On you, and we'll get to everybody who would like to comment for or against, um, the, uh, Powell zoning change. And so I'll just wait here to start seeing some hands up, and, uh, I'll call on you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have some folks in my office that, um, would like to comment.
Well, absolutely. Well, let's just start with them. Go right ahead.
So, I'm Anthony Dick, um, and Tammy, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be against this very much. But I do drive that road. I drive it at least four times every other week, back and forth to Cheyenne. I tried to get home one night. I could not get home, because there was a gentleman that was killed on the highway, just about where Tammy's. Property is. Uh, there were two semis coming opposite directions. A guy tried to turn left to the north side of two thirty. A guy came around him, and one of the truck drivers ended up dying. Not too long after that, just down the road, another couple miles, there was another wreck. I drive home all the time. There's people that pass me. I may have a blinker on. I'm trying to turn left into my property, which is at the twenty mile, twenty and a half mile. And they ignore the, uh, turn signal and go by me. I heard of this also happening on two eighty seven. There is no, that's, I guess, my biggest concern about it. If there's gonna be twenty lots in there, the density is. Way, uh, more dense than anywhere else on that highway. And I do drive it, like I said, almost. Um, what, about ten times a month? The other thing was somebody brought up about the compatibility with the surrounding properties. And it's, it's not. Um, and somebody mentioned about a trailer. And there's a few. Uh, smaller things over on Harmony. Most of them are, some of them come off of two thirty. A lot of them come, come up behind two thirty. So it's not a danger. Like hers, this one would be with how many people, twenty people, how many cars are coming and going. Um, I walk across the highway all the time to feed my horses, and it's just gotten worse and worse with the traffic. It's just not compatible to have that much density. And I know they, I know they changed it from smaller lots. Which have been even worse, but with twenty lots, it's still nothing. We drove it today to come in here to the meeting. Nothing like that along two thirty. The city water, I understood that Tammy was saying that she talked to the city about it. Um, we're west of the water treatment plant, and we do have the pipeline go through it, but we can't tap on into it. Because it's not treated until it gets to the plant. Um, so if they can't get city water, are they all gonna have wells on? Uh, five acre lots, and what happens to my water table? That's like two and a half miles down the road. Um, and then somebody brought up about the waste. Uh, what are they gonna do? They're all gonna have septic. Twenty septic wells right there that are gonna bleach into the ground, and then it's on a, a raised area. So it's gonna leach into Tammy's land that is down the hill from it. There's the ditch that runs along. That's, uh, south of her property, but it's gonna be impacted by. The leaching from all the fields that are in there. I, I just. Wanted to be able to have our input, and it seems like this has gone.
They come from Harmony?
You can get your, and I, that's what I have for notes. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, go ahead.
Okay, my concerns are.
Hold on before you go, what's your name and state your address, please? Thank you.
Jim Howard, twenty forty five Highway two thirty.
Go right ahead.
My main concerns are the wells out there are sixty-five foot deep. They ain't fit for a buzzer. I have to haul water as well from the water treatment plant, as the people on Harmony, as the people at, uh, Hattie. They come clear from in town to come to the water treatment plant, because it has a great dump. I mean, the traffic's crazy there. I was on the fire, volunteer fire department fifteen years, and I seen all of it. And it hasn't got a bit better, and it's probably twice as bad. So to add more traffic to there, not so good. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, anybody else wishing to speak on, uh, the Powell zoning change?
We might as well finish with the people that are here in the office, if that's okay?
Oh, is there more people there? Okay, go, uh, how many, hold on one second. How many people do we have there, David?
There's just three.
So there's one more. Okay, go ahead and state your name and address and go right ahead.
My name is Noreen Scherer, and I live at twenty eighty-four State Highway two thirty. And I share many of the same concerns that the two other folks here have. I'll start with the highway. Ann said she drives it ten times a month. I drive that highway at least two times a week. And, and there have been serious fatalities on that road. I have people that pass me on solid lines. People that pass me on a dollar line when they have no business passing, and the other car has to veer off. There's been at least a dozen times that I've almost put myself into a ditch, because I've got somebody passing somebody coming head on at me. You've got people coming off the side roads that absolutely do not stop before they enter a highway that has a seventy mile an hour speed limit. I'm doing seventy miles an hour. I can't stop on a dime when somebody pulls out in front of me. Traffic is horrendous on that road as it is, and Ann already stated, if you add twenty units. And housing development, you're probably adding at least forty more cars, minimum, depending on the size of the family. So that's my biggest issue with the roadway. You have your public service, police, EMS, fire, they're already stretched thin as it is. What's that gonna do to response times going forward? How are they gonna be able to take on that additional responsibility? Um, the water, the septic tank, you, each individual house is gonna have to have a septic tank. Where is that ultimately gonna leach into? I'm on a well, because as like Kim Howard, I'm west of that treatment plant. So even though my property gave the city an easement to put that pipe in, I don't get any of that water. I don't get any advantage of that. The city gets one hundred percent of the advantage of that pipeline. I get nothing as the property owner. So with twenty additional septic tanks going in, what is that gonna do to my water table and my well and the quality of my water? You know, if you gotta put in another twenty wells in addition, if the city water doesn't go through, what does that do to the existing areas? I don't think a twenty unit development is consistent with the existing. Land use around that lot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, being that there's not any more people down there with you, David, we'll go ahead and move on to the participants list. And I see that there's a, a Stephen Cameron. Uh, Mr. Cameron, go ahead and state your name and your address.
And.
Uh, my name's. Uh, my name's Stephen Cameron. I live at fifty-two Hornsby. And I was just curious of, uh, I know she hasn't done her covenants yet or whatever out there, but. Curious about fences and, uh, the antelope and deer that move through there daily. Not been able to.
Just a.
Yeah, with, with, with four fences, uh, per property, what that would do to the wildlife migrations. But that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is that, okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Powell, available? Um, as far as Mr. Cameron's question, um, what are your, uh, uh, as far as, uh, fencing that you're gonna have on? Um, and you're probably controlled through your covenants, but, um, the type of fencing that you're kinda planning on having out in your subdivision? But if, if you were, or gonna require any fencing, or, and if you are, what fencing would that be?
So can I ask why this is relevant?
Uh, yeah, because, oh, sorry.
A little confused here.
All right, um, so if you have twenty-five acre lots out there, my guess is they're all gonna wanna fence them off for their. Why, for their own, uh, livestock or whatever, but there's a lot of antelope and deer that move through the area, and that's gonna. Uh, four to five strand fences really impact antelope movement.
So the game and fish has told me that they need wildlife friendly, friendly fence. So if I even allow fencing out there, it would be wildlife friendly.
So a single strand on top and no bottom strand?
Whatever, whatever they tell me would be best for that area. I mean, I, I am not a fencer. I would rely on someone from the game and fish to tell me what they wanted.
Okay, that is my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. I see, uh, Nathan Nielsen. Your hands up.
Yes, thank you for your guys' time. I, uh, Nathan Nielsen, uh, address is eighteen eighty-four Highway two thirty. Uh, adjoining the property that's, we're being talked about. I think a lot of our, uh. Concerns have been, uh, answered or addressed today, and I appreciate everyone bringing that up. Um. Our biggest thing right now, I guess, is towards the, the focus on the water. Um, Ms. Tammy, you even said, you know, it's hard to run cattle on that, and I, I very well understand that, so that. Leads us to the direct question of if it's hard to sustain cattle. Now we are trying to sustain upwards of twenty households. Um, with livestock, four age animals, all that on top of that, along with the septic systems going in. To my sixty-foot well that we rely on at this moment. So I guess that's our biggest concern is the whole water issue. Um, I did see in something that I couldn't really understand on top of that was, uh, I believe that. The roadways were changed in the new proposal. If someone could kinda help clarify maybe how that road change was laid out for us, maybe that would kinda. Settle some of us at ease also, and I don't think that was, uh, quite brought up today. Um, other than that. Uh, I appreciate your guys' time. I like the idea of the, uh, city water. But, uh, I don't think that's needs to be our solution out in the county, due to the fact of, we live in the county. Why should we have to be tied on to city water to sustain out in the county? And, uh, I just hope that the, the zoning change doesn't, uh. Impact all of our, uh, our living and our way of our water rights that we do have now that would are, uh. Pretty special out there for the people that don't have to haul water, and then, uh, impacts on, you know, the water plant and all that, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Um, and your question about, um, the, uh, uh, road. Uh, we'll see a plat after this, so, uh, and we'll address that and probably, um, this is about that. But at this point, it's just his own change, um, as far as the design of the subdivision and where the lots lay, that's. That'll come next in the na, next application when we get through this, but thanks for your questions.
Thank you.
Terrace, uh, Terrace Smith, um, please state your name and your address and, and, uh, go ahead and, uh. Say whether you're for.
Yeah, hi, um, I'm Terrace Smith. My address is fifty-one Meadow Plains Road. Um, my, I just, I had two comments. So one was, and it was kind of mentioned earlier by another lady, but, um, what kind of. Regulations are there, and what does the applicant have to present as far as the impacts on the very already small fire department? That has to take care of all of these properties. Um, mine happens to be a little farther down the road, but essentially bringing in twenty more homes. That an already stressed system has to take care of can be, can be obviously something that everybody should worry about. Um, so I was curious what they do have to do for that. Does that come later when, um, the application for subdivision is done and such? But, um, certainly something that I think that should be mentioned. Um, and, and the, and of course, the water, it's, it's something that has been brought up several, several times, but. I, even Ms. Hanning mentioned in the very beginning, even though this is only specifically for zoning. Once the zoning is changed, you, there's no going back. And even though there's some things that Tammy hasn't had to present specifically. Towards the zoning change, things that would be, come later in application process, it's hard to go backwards. Once the zoning is changed, the zoning is changed, and, um, it seems like some of this should be a little more important. In the earlier stages, so that's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, Ms. Powell, I see your hands up. Um, would you like to comment or maybe answer some, uh, questions that have been brought up?
Sure, if I could. Um.
Go right ahead.
Thing, I, I hope that Flint is on here, because Nathan. I was not aware that the roads were going to change, so after I get done, um, with just a couple things. Maybe Flint could answer that question for you, and, and maybe Sean, we wait until the plat. I, I just wanna. You know, I wanna be upfront with everybody about this, because like I said, I can't graze cattle there, but I can tell you. One thing, that if I can't get city water, the, the next thing that I would look at is a cistern. Because you all have to remember, I have two hundred and fifty acres of meadow ground south of this. And I'm gonna keep the two east lots until I'm dead, dying, or gone, because I have to have that ag road. I'm just trying to make the best use of this property. Um, I don't want anybody's wells to go dry. I, I get that. I live here. I'm from here. I, you know. Kim, Kim and Ann, I, I get where you're coming from. I know what you're talking about. I am not going to. If, if the land use change happens, and, and the plat, you know, I don't know. At that point with the plat, where, where the county is gonna wanna see the water district, okay? But let's just say something weird happens. I mean, I've been working on this for three years. I've been trying to do the best I could to make sure all the carts are before the horses, but let's just say that the, the city. Isn't gonna allow me to tap in, which will save me my three hundred thousand dollars on my pump. If, if we can't get water by a cistern, and I'm not very familiar with those, I mean, I'm not a developer. I'm a ranch girl. So if we can't get water from a cistern, I don't think it's appropriate to put twenty lots out there. And expect that land to support twenty wells, because there's not enough water, and I know that, okay? And to answer the question about the traffic. You say there's no, you know, there's more traffic there than there is anywhere else. Well, there, you got seven mile, you got nine mile and seven mile and nine mile. Um, you know, Nathan, your comment about we're in the county, we shouldn't be relying on city water, um, seven mile and nine mile are on city water. So it, this isn't, this isn't the first time this has been done. It brings a lot of revenue to the city, because they spend a lot of. You know, they did a lot of planning on this water thing starting in eighteen seventy-four. But I specifically, I specifically asked the highway department if they would recommend turn lanes. Because I was prepared to put in turn lanes, so you could have acceleration lanes. Um, I think everybody that's been following this from the last meeting, I have to put two new approaches in. I have to put one thirteen hundred and twenty-five feet west of where the current ag one is, and then I have to put one on the end over by, um, Nathan and Tanya's house. Um, I'm prepared to put in acceleration lanes. It's gonna cost me another hundred thousand dollars, but I am not here. To, to develop and leave. This is my home. So we got a letter from Mike Ginther at the Wyoming Highway Department that is in the packet. And they said they didn't want acceleration lanes. I will visit that again, because I personally think there needs to be acceleration lanes. For at least one of those turnoffs, the first one on the three hundred and twenty-five feet west of mine. But I, I've tried to. But I, I've tried to address every concern I could think of that I would have if I was a neighbor out there. So hopefully, and, and for the fire department, Ms. Hanning, one of the things, or, or Burn, I can't remember who asked me last time or asked if the school district had any comments about it. I contacted the school district, and I was told that if the school district was not in favor of the subdivision, they would be opposing it. They, they've got so much going on that, you know, they can't go to these meetings and say, hey, we, we support you. But they can say if they find something that would be detrimental to Harmony School that would have an impact of possibly 20 or more children, that they wouldn't want that. And, and they have not said that to me. They have not said we don't support that. And insofar as the fire, you know, the Big Valley Volunteer Fire Department, we, you know, if and when at some point there were 20 homes out there, you got 20 more people to go to the cancer dance to raise money for the, the volunteer highway or fire department. I mean, I, I just, I just have tried to do the best I could.
Well, thank you, Tammy, and thanks for your comments. Not seeing any other hands up at this point. I'll go ahead and close this to a public comment.
Cheryl Bren has her hand up. Chairman Moore?
I don't see it up on the participants list.
Yeah, it's on the, on our video. Sorry.
She's waving.
She's waving. Okay, Ms. Bren, go right ahead.
For some reason, I can't get it to come up. But anyway, I just wanted to make a comment. I agree with everything that Neil and the other people said about the water and stuff out here and the septics. I mean, I think it's going to create a bunch of problems. I think 20 houses is too much. You know, if she wanted to cut it down, then I think that we probably would stand a chance. You know, 20 houses is a lot. And, you know, she said she has a tap on the water line. I've called the city. I can't tap into the water line. So I was wondering what kind of pool she has to get tapped in on a water line. And like turning into my property, like, you know, you get a lot of traffic out here. And when my kids come out to visit me, they have to pull all the way off to the far right before they can actually turn in to my property because it's busy. Do you know what I'm saying? And then my son-in-law was trying to turn into my property that one day, and he got hit from behind. And I know that's just a regular driving issue. It's not your concern. But it happens quite often out here. I remember that big accident they had down here at Harmony School a few years ago where those people were killed and that kind of stuff, trying to turn in to pick up their kids. And then also, I was concerned about that drainage ditch that's going to be right next to my property. What's that going to do? What's a drainage ditch for? Did anyone want to take that? Anybody want to take that one?
Now, what was your question again, Ms. Bren?
The drainage ditch that's supposed to go right next to my property.
So at this point right now, so right now, Ms. Bren, we're, we're talking, we're not talking about the plat, okay? We're talking about a zone change. We have another application that's behind us, and we will address that, and we'll talk about that. And those questions are great, but we got to stay focused on the topic at hand. And that right now is changing ground from agricultural to rural residential, okay? And so we'll look at that, and we'll ask those questions, and you'll stay online. And we're going to give you the opportunity to ask those questions and get those questions addressed, okay? So at this point, we're not going to answer that question because it doesn't concern what we're actually going for right here. Are you done with your comments?
I just, you know, like I said, and then another big issue is, you know, the antelope and that kind of stuff. You know, sometimes we get, I get 50, 60 of them that lay on my property. They're not going to come out here. You know? So wildlife is a big concern.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bren. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this issue? Not seeing any other hands up at this point. We'll go ahead and close this to public comment. At this point, do we have any discussion with members of the Planning and Zoning Board? Ms. Hanning?
Um, I, I'm going to hold off on comments right now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
But no problem. Mr. Kennedy?
None, thank you.
Mr. Hinckley?
Again, my comments will go to the form of the motion that I anticipate.
Okay, Mr. Spiegelberg? And none from myself, Chairman Moore. So at this point, we're looking for a motion, either a motion, a motion to approve, a motion to deny this application, or a motion to table it.
I would show a move to approve.
So a motion to approve the, the only other zoning change, yes, presently presented, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Kennedy, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? A motion for approval. Mr. Kennedy, any discussion?
None, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hanning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I've, I've appreciated this robust discussion about the issues. And like I said, I, I, I would like to support this, but I'm, I'm just uncomfortable about not having the water piece in. And, and I appreciate all the information that Ms. Powell has tracked down. But I, I'd prefer to be tabling this at this time to give her the chance to, to simply just work out the engineering details so we could just know the feasibility of being able to pressurize the system and, and meet the needs of 20 homes before letting that horse out of the barn. Because the, the difference between being on that water system versus not seems like it's a, it's a big different kind of consideration on the zoning impact. And, and I feel Ms. Powell is doing her due diligence, you know, following up with ACSD-1. I really appreciate that, all, all the things that she's following up with. And I, I just can't vote yes for this quite yet until, until I see that the water pieces really clearly in, in one direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Hinckley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, did, hold on, Mr. Hinckley. Did somebody call my name? Not hearing anything. Mr. Hinckley, we'll go right ahead. Your discussion.
Yeah, okay, I cannot support the motion as presented because I think it fails to meet the regulations under which we operate, which enumerate that we must make the following findings, and then those are listed. And I don't see anything in this verbal record or the written record that we have in front of us that satisfies that requirement that we must make those findings. Now, more to the substance of it rather than the form, I'm reluctant to find that, quote, "public facilities will adequately meet the needs of the proposed zoning change," which is one of the items that we have to be able to find. Nor am I able to find, based on the information that we've been provided, that the existing road network can accommodate the increase in traffic. So that's the basis for my reluctance to vote for the motion as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Mr. Spiegelberg, any discussion, comments, points? Okay, all right, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. No questions or discussions really for myself. I mean, other than the fact that, you know, the highway is a, you know, you know, public right-of-way owned, and right-of-way's own highways, the ground's actually owned by the state of Wyoming, and they're the ones who grant access off their highway. And as, you know, as bad as that accident was, you know, that's mainly out of our jurisdiction. And we understand that and, you know, get that. But the planning office does visit with YDOT, and YDOT makes their recommendations. And those concerns of people going 70 miles an hour down the highway, you know, the state of Wyoming was the one who decided to raise the speed limit. Certainly, they can lower the speed limit. And the highway patrol is the one who patrols it too, and you just hope that people drive safe. But that's something that, you know, whether this subdivision or somebody who's just traveling through the road from California, I mean, we just hope that everybody travels safely. Before we, I call the vote, I see Mr. Gerch, your hands up. Do you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to reiterate what the findings that need to be made are. The findings necessary for approval are, one, the applicant has provided the required site plan and survey. So that's the first finding that needs to be made. The second finding is the applicant has addressed the following impacts, which is the list of what has went through. You know, if, if there was, I mean, I, it sounds like Mr. Hinckley already has some other concerns with, with these. But if there needed to be an amendment to say, under the staff response of that the applicant has sufficiently addressed these impacts, I think if you made those changes, and we would be okay with that amendment, then you can make that, those findings. Because really, the findings aren't, the staff doesn't have to find anything. You have to find that the applicant has provided you information that you need. So just a, a point of clarification, which I don't think is going to change anybody's votes or anything. But I just, as I was thinking about this, I think I addressed it not, not how I should have earlier. So this is what I just wanted to provide you with, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gerch. We'll go ahead and call a vote here. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
No.
Mr. Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Mr. Hinckley?
Ooh.
Chairman Moore, myself, I, motion carries. We're going to move on to the next public application. And the next public, public application is going to be Harley Acre Subdivision. Mr. Gerch or Mr. Willness, would you guys like to go over the application for us?
All right, you guys ready? All right, the advocate is Tammy Powell, owner is Harlaia Acres LLC. The request is to approve preliminary plat. Current use is vacant. There were several reviews. Dory Undergroth, the addressing coordinator, had comments regarding the road names. Those issues have been taken care of, and the full comments can be seen in the review section. Grant Showaker, county assessor, have no comments. Karen Bowman, senior GIS analyst, had comments regarding the road names. Once again, those have been taken care of. Full comments can be seen in the review section. Engineer Jake Schneider had comments regarding the preliminary plat designer for preliminary construction drives. Those issues have been taken care of. The full comments can be seen in the review section, and he has no concerns after reviewing the 20-lot subdivision. Wyoming Department of Transportation, Ryan Shields, district traffic engineer, had comments regarding work within the white dot right-of-way, left turn lanes and new accesses. The full comments can be seen in the review section. I will say, he did say that no left turn lanes would be needed. Wyoming Game and Fish, Amanda Loesch, recommends minimizing the construction of new fencing. But if fencing is constructed, it should be built using wildlife-friendly specifications. She also had comments on the Wyoming code. The full comments can be seen in the review section. Summary of subdivision permit requirements. Water, a water district will be created on the acceptance of the final plat application, and water will be provided by the city of Laramie. Sewer, septic will be provided by individual systems. Small wastewater treatment facilities will need to be applied for through the Albany County Planning Office. A storm drainage report was complete, was completed for this proposal, interviewed by Jake Schneider, the county engineer. Carbon Power and Light provides power to the area. Postal Service is existing. Three new roads named Fisher Ditch Drive, Sagebrush Drive, and Never Summer Lane are proposed. The applicant will need to drop to covenant with road maintenance plan at the time of the final plat. Road maintenance will need to be taken care of with the final plat. Final financial assurance for improvements will need to be needed at the time of the final plat. And fire protection will be provided by Albany County. Notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 4, Section 9. There were a couple of variances. Variances may be granted per Chapter 1, Section B of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. The complete variance request are in the review section. The applicant is requesting a variance request from the Albany County Subdivision Regulations on road profile grades at less than 0.5% slope. The applicant proposes to follow the existing general grade of 0.3% slope. Jake Schneider, county engineer, advises approval of the variance request. And the applicant is requesting a variance from the Albany County Subdivision Regulations on cul-de-sacs greater than 600 feet. Cul-de-sacs greater than 600 feet are permitted if the adjoining lots are one acre or larger and by special permission from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Findings of fact, the information provided in the staff report shall be incorporated as findings of fact. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Our staff analysis is that this subdivision is being proposed in an area that's been previously developed into a residential community. The preliminary plat complies with the standards of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. This property is currently zoned agricultural with acceptance of the previous land use change rural residential. The lots will be accessed from Highway 230. All WDEQ reports will be needed to turn in with the final plat application. Financial assurance, covenants, and the road plans will also need to be finalized with the final plat application. Staff recommends approval of preliminary plat for the Harlaia Acres subdivision, preliminary plat application SD-0821, and the variances being asked for, briefed upon, and incorporated in findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Willness. We're going to go through all the commissioners here. Any, the questions for staff regarding the, the actual subdivision? So I think a lot of questions we got in the zoning, with the zoning, we're going to have questions here. So I'll go ahead and start. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for planning staff?
I'll, I'll reserve my questions. I'll reserve my questions for, after we've gone through all of the public hearing.
Okay, very good. Mr. Spiegelberg, do, do you have any questions for staff for the Harley Acre Subdivision?
None.
None. Ms. Hanning, do you have any questions for planning staff as concerns to the Harley Acre Subdivision?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just have one question for staff, for Mr. Willness. One of the concerns that seems to come up is the location of the road to the proximity of the, the back property line of adjoining property owners, and that, you know, they've, they've rightly faced their houses in that direction, and, and they're not excited about a road there. And can, can you just remind me of the setback requirements from property boundaries? And, and does this meet that with the location of this road? Thank you.
The proximity to it.
The, the setback from the road from what? The pro, the, the setback from the road from what?
How far the road has to be from another private property line?
From, from the existing property lines. Does, does there have to be any kind of, um, setback between the existing property lines and where this, this road will be going through?
Uh, no. No, there's no setbacks for roads.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hinkley, any questions for staff pertaining to the preliminary plat?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the staff recommendation is that we approve the preliminary plat based upon incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law. And I again find myself wondering, where are these findings? Or where do I find, where do I find the findings?
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, that would be the summary of the subdivision permit requirements. Those are findings. Yeah. Sorry, this is written differently than what I, so, I mean, basically the staff report is the, is the findings. Everything's listed in here before that point.
So the findings would, to your share, the findings would be the summary of subdivision permit requirements.
Correct. The information, so the summary of application information, the reviews, and the summary of subdivision permit requirements. Those are the findings.
Okay, um, now the specific one, uh, you, you have found, you were recommending that we find, phrase it correctly, that they have met all of the requirements for preliminary plat. When I look at the regulations, I find as one of the listed items for a preliminary plat, copy of all information submitted to and approved by the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality, Army State Health Service, Laramie River Conservation District, um, that to me would seem to be the, what we call the chapter twenty-three study. Was that provided with the preliminary plat as seems to be required here?
I don't believe that was provided. Was that, we require with the final plat?
I'm, I'm reading from your regulations. You require with the preliminary plat unless I'm mistaken. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Um, we've always, I mean, I guess it's just been a man, a matter of practice to provide or require that with the final plat, just because of the cost associated with it. But, um, but yeah, it is listed, I believe, in the preliminary plat section.
Okay, maybe we put that on our list for, for, uh, regulations that need, need some fine tuning. Um, so, uh, give us just the overview. What is the difference between the final and the preliminary plat then? Uh, what is it that we're approving now? And, and I'm sensitive to Ms. Powell's comments earlier that we take these sequentially. What, what are we approving with the final plat? And then what additional information will we have uh, to review before we approve the final plat? We'll talk about that later in terms of separating those two, but can you give us a, a quick overview of preliminaries versus finals?
Sure. I mean, the preliminary plat is also, you could also call it the plan. I mean, this is the plan that they're doing. Um, you get a lot of the, some, you get a storm drainage report. Um, they talk to the utility companies. Um, you know, they propose the roads and kind of the, where those are going to be at. Basically, it's a kind of a review plan that they're providing to us. And so we review all those things. Um, the final plat is different in that, um, the preliminary plat, you have a bunch of, you know, the Tobo and all of that information on there, and things that aren't going to be filed, um, with the final plat. The final plat is the cleaned up plat. Um, it's when all, we, we require all the reports and, uh, you know, maintenance agreements and, um, those types of things. So it's more of the, I mean, the final plat itself is what will be filed once it's approved and requires all of those things that the plating statutes require on it, so that it can be filed with the clerk's office. Where the preliminary plat is more just a plan. We look at it. It doesn't get filed anywhere other than in our files in our office.
So, so, so Mr. Chair, just procedurally, I, I guess I'm looking at where in this process from zoning change to preliminary plat to final plat, do we, do we look, uh, with some focus on things like, uh, traffic patterns, adequacy of water and wastewater facilities? Uh, I assume the point of preliminary plat is that so Ms. Powell can, can confidently go forward making the investments to, to clean up some of those issues. So, what? I'm looking for those decision points. Will we come back to some of these issues that have been raised when we look at the final plat? Or, or are we giving a pass to those now?
Well, some of the, I mean, a lot of it, like, we will come back to, um, you know, where the water goes. I mean, all the, all the engineered information other than the storm drainage plan is typically provided with the final plat. So we'll see the engineering for the water system. We'll see the engineering designs for the roads. Um, and the, the plan and profile of the roads, those come in with the final plat. So, I mean, yes, I think we will re-go over some of the things that we've already discussed in these, because that's when the, the public obviously comments and some of these things come up and, and, you know, we don't have all that information at this point. Um, so, so yeah, I mean, are there things that we'll hash through again? Yeah, there are.
Just maybe a small example, Mr. Chair, um, something like, um, the public comments have emphasized water and wastewater. So if we are presented with the final plat and find something in the water supply or the wastewater that, that we take strong exception to, we will have the decision space to, to deny or condition the final plat. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one, one, one more question, um, and it, it bears on the game and fish recommendations, uh, can, can we, should we, have you got any advice on turning a recommendation into a requirement? And again, this is something we've discussed repeatedly over my time on planning and zoning. Uh, our, our, our phrasing tends to be applicant should follow game and fish regulations, and we'll see that again on the next, uh, the next proposal. Can we require?
Look out for the.
So, so my question is.
Hold on, Mr. Hinkley, hold on, Mr. Hinkley. And we'll let you continue here. Um, with everybody who's on the zone meeting, I know it's all relatively new all in our world. Um, but please make sure that your microphones are off and the, the respect of the person who's speaking, because it's hard to hear the person speaking when we have microphones on. So please, um, try to be cognizant of that. And Mr. Hinkley, continue. And sorry that your train of thought got interrupted.
No, 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 thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a, it's like, sorry, everybody says turn off your cell phones when you're at the concert, and we all look around, everybody else, and realize ours is on. So, yes, the question I think boils down to, uh, when we, we solicit comments from game and fish on these applications like the, like the subdivision, and then they come back typically in the form of, we recommend, uh, uh, wildlife friendly fencing. Are, do our regulations authorize us to require those recommendations be implemented? Or do we simply serve as a, as a kind of a broker to, to pass those recommendations on to the applicant?
Uh, so I don't, I, I don't have my regulations in front of me. However, um, I do believe that there is some latitude, um, to address wildlife issues. Um, we do have our county attorney, um, on the line as well. So, um, Mr. Ayers can, um, address that as well. But, you know, there are some cons, planning considerations that we can consider. Um, what I like to do is, you know, I mean, what I think is good practice is to have, you know, ask the applicant to work, you know, with, with game and fish. Um, or, you know, work with them. A lot of times it's with these types of things, though, they, they're amenable to put things in their covenants, um, to address the, the wildlife issues. They, they can be put into covenants. Um, but, um, but yeah, how much latitude can we say that this is the law because we said it and we want you to do it because game and fish did? Um, I'll let Matt a- answer that question.
Uh, Chairman Moore. Um, after, uh, speaking with Jennifer, who was unable to join us today, uh, we are of the position that within the zoning resolution, um, it is appropriate, uh, to require agency recommendations, um, and that can be done.
And, and a quick follow-up, uh, Mr. Chair, at what point in the process is that done, Mr. Ayers? At the final plat or now or?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, where we're getting, um, you know, the information already from, we've sent it to game and fish to look at. We've sent it to YDOT. Um, I think when those comments come in, um, you know, at this point, the preliminary plat, this is the perfect time to put those as contingencies of your, your staff, you know, your recommendation. Um, to say that, you know, by the final plat, we would like to see some kind of something that comes out of, of those recommendations. So, um, that's, that's my opinion. I just feel like, you know, that's what the preliminary plat is for, is to find some of these issues. And then get them taken care of before the, the final plat comes to us, so.
I, I, I see Mr. Ayers hand up. Did he want to add something to that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I you can, are, uh, under section three of chapter four, um, which is page IV one. Um, it does allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to require that any conditions attached to a recommendation for approval of a preliminary plat uh, be satisfied by a, um, specific deadline. However, if you are speaking in terms of making requirements um, as part of covenants, I would agree with David that that is I guess plausible timeline, um, in the sense that those uh, may still very much have been in the works, but you can absolutely uh, you can also then, again, um, require them on the final plat. But there is no mandatory language.
Okay, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, so if, if, for example, this commission were to want to require wildlife friendly fence, would we make that part of the preliminary plat approval or the final plat approval? Or, or does that our choice?
Uh, Mr. Chair, as the regulations are currently written, that would be, uh, to the discretion of the board. Or, sorry, of the commission.
Good. Thank you. That's all, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hinkley. Um, kind of forgot where we're at. Mr. Spiegelberg, do you have any questions for staff? And I believe I asked Mr. Kennedy already, and, um, I guess no questions for me at this point. We'll move on, we'll close this discussion and move on to the applicant. With the applicant or applicants representative, I see a couple of times that a Mr. Paulson from Coffee Engineering has had his hand raised for a second, but if the applicant or Mr. Paulson, um, would like to comment on, um, the Harley Acre Subdivision, uh, now would be your opportunity.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if Flint is available. One of the things that I asked him, I think he has to get kids from school, um, is Nathan had asked about a change in a road, and I was not aware that there was a change in the road from, you know, once we went from small residential to rural. Is that small residential to rural tracks? Is that right? Is that the right language?
Small residential to rural residential.
Yeah, rural residential, so.
And to be, and I apologize for interrupting here, uh, Ms. Powell, but it looks, um, looking at last month's packet and today's packet, there's very minimal change, if any.
Okay, that's what Flint said, is that there should have been no change on the new plat. So, that's really, um, all I have to offer. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions about this subdivision.
That. Um, I'm, I'm driving, uh, Chairman Moore. Go ahead and answer those questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Paulson.
So what we did from the other, um, application is we increased the sizes of the lots, so they're really nice lots. Uh, the roads did not change. We reduced the impact on the sanitary sewer dramatically by re, by getting rid of four lots, um, as per Weston Engineering that did the, um, environmental impact study. So those have all been addressed, so that, that the wastewater will be consistent with, with what's in the area, and it won't have any adverse effect on any of the neighbor or neighboring properties. Uh, we are engineering a pump system for the water that will deliver the water around, as Tammy stated. Those are all, all will be, be done at the final plat during the, um, the water district creation. Uh, the roads are per county standard. So those, those will all be maintained and, and, and per, oh, so we've basically met every standard that the county requires for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Uh, Ms. Powell, would you, feel free to continue?
I just, I'm offering to answer any additional questions that anyone would, would have. I'm just trying to answer questions so decisions can be made.
Absolutely. Thank you. And, and stay on. We'll probably have some questions for you as well. So, uh, appreciate that, Ms. Powell. Um, at this point, um, we're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. And, um, again, um, I ask people who wish to speak, um, as concerns to the actual plating of the ground, the subdivision, the preliminary plat um, uh, with their public comments, um, as far as therefore or against um, the Harley Acre Subdivision. And again, please state your name and your address, and I'll certainly try to get to everybody um, in a timely manner. So, at this point, uh, Mr. Gerch, are the, uh, three individuals still in your office? Um, do they, uh, are they still there?
Um, there's, there's one, one person here in my office, but they would like to defer to the everybody else since they went first last time.
Okay, very good. So at this point, um, please raise your hand on the participants list and I'll call on you, and we'll listen to your comments. And see if we can get answers, um, some questions answered or, or things that maybe we do need to add to a preliminary plat of the land or, or what we need to do. So, um, anybody wishing to speak, please raise your hand. And, Ms. Bryn, um, I'll, I'll call on you here in a minute. I know you were having some difficulty, uh, raising your hand on the participants list, so I'll get to you as well. Not, uh, Mr. Nathan Nielsen, go ahead.
There we go. I think I'm on. Thank you for your guys' time. Uh, now that the zoning's under the bridge, I guess I'm kind of as confused as some of the chairman on what we're actually talking about here, but I just want to reiterate, it sounds like they've, uh, done some wastewater um, concerns. I talked to one of the county wastewater engineers yesterday, um, and he's definitely, uh, was concerned about the issue that I brought up to him behind our land. So I just, uh, I just want to make sure that, that those findings, uh, like Mr. Hinkley was. Want to make sure that that those findings, uh, like Mr. Hinckley was talking about, where do we find these? What time do we talk about them? And then like the wildlife uh fences and the stuff like that. Um. How do we enforce those regulations? Before it has to go to covenants? I don't like the idea of talking, we got to cover. Cover our bases under her covenants. When those covenants can be changed at any time. Later on. So I guess that those are, those are my concerns and uh appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Uh, Ms. Bryn. Show Bryn. Not hearing from. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Bryn.
Okay, so uh. The things I mentioned earlier, is that what you want to hear?
Yes, I think you brought up something about drainage before, um, this is the time to uh address that.
Yeah, the drainage ditch, it's gonna run right alongside my property, the way I understand. What's it consist of?
Mr. Paulson, are you still available?
Uh, this is Tammy. Let me text him. He's driving and and he is the one that would have.
I'm here, I'm here. Um, the drainage is to convey the water. As per requirements of the county, it won't affect your land at all. It's completely on. Tammy's land and it'll it's sized so that it will not over top and will take it to the highway right away. And and will be released at historic rates.
So it'll be totally underground?
No, no, it'll be a ditch. It'll be a a. A small drainage swale, not not the ditch that like you're thinking it, it'll be a gradual swale that won't impact anything. It won't cause any issues with um kids or anything like that. It it'll be dry most of the time, other than when there's a rain event. And it it'll just, it'll it's just to drain the properties per county, county, county regulations.
I guess I'm more uh concerned about the mosquitoes. Cause we get them bad out here, so this just adds to our mosquito population.
Well, it it's so it won't, it won't have standing water on it. There will be no standing water. That's that's the purpose of it is to drain it to the right way to keep the water running. We we will not detain the water.
And then like I said, my other concern was, you know. About the wildlife and. The. And open stuff, but also all these utilities there have, are we gonna have power lines at every place?
No, there will be no power line. Everything will be underground.
Everything's gonna be underground?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, I guess that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bryn. And thank you, Mr. Paulson, for being available for those comments. Uh, Mr. Gerch, um, seeing there's no hands up, the individual in your office, they'd like to speak would be a good time right now.
So again, my name is Maureen Sherman. I live at twenty eight four State Highway two thirty and I just want to stand on my um previous comments. Um, with opposition to this development and just one clarification, I'm not sure who. Had a misunderstanding that my concern was the speed limits on Highway thirty. Wasn't necessarily the speed limit, but the fact that if you're going seventy miles an hour. And almost weekly I have somebody pull out in front of me, I can't stop on a dime when you give me. A hundred feet to stop when somebody just doesn't yield to the right away. And people are already doing it now, so it's only going to become worse with more people. But again, I do oppose the development and I stand on my prior comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I don't see any other hands up at this point. Um, unless somebody um changes me, lets me know otherwise, but at this point, we'll go ahead and. Close this to public comment. Um, we'll go around to all the commissioners and and uh have some discussion. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, do you have any discussion concerning this preliminary plat?
Uh. I have several thoughts. Uh, one, I would be. Comfortable and and I guess this is also a point where we could bring in the applicant as well, but. Uh. I would, I would be personally be comfortable requiring wildlife friendly fencing. As per Wyoming game and fish specifications. Uh, I am not comfortable uh with requiring anything as far as. Traffic or the highway because I'm not a traffic engineer and. YDOT certainly is, uh. Other than that, uh, I, I think we should go ahead with this, uh, to get the. Final studies that are required for the the final plat, uh, and. Go ahead and and move this forward and with that, I'll. Turn it over to someone else.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, Ms. Hanny.
I I have no comments at this time. Thank you, uh, other than I I'm also in support of conditioning it to add the um wildlife. Friendly fencing. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Uh, Mr. Spiegelberg, any comments based off this plat?
I do, uh. Mr. Chairman, I totally agree uh with uh Commissioner Keith Kennedy. That uh the accesses up and down the highway, those are strictly in the purview and authority of the. Wyoming Highway Department, YDOT, and that is not in our purview. And uh, I agree with Mr. Kennedy that we should move forward and these uh. Uh, critical studies and so forth can can proceed and and uh. Get everything finalized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Spiegelberg. Mr. Hinckley?
Um, yeah, uh, I agree with Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Hanning's suggestion there. Um, as I'm looking at the regulations, I see a road impact study may be required. Um, and and I, as I say, the two things that trouble me are are the water wastewater, which I think we have determined. We'll get a a crack at that once we see some additional information. Um. Maybe a discussion amongst the commission or or planning staff is a. Is a road impact study appropriate in this case? I. I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Spiegelberg in that even at the zoning change, we are required to make an affirmative finding. That public services are up to the task, so. Could I, could I hear some some comments from the planning staff and commission on whether we think a. A a more serious look at these traffic issues is appropriate?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Yeah, Dave, that's a question I had to. Um, to add on to what Mr. Hinckley said is is. Um, you know, YDOT has been noticed and I saw or had had been given notice in the subdivision in their comments and I read through them. Um, what were their thoughts on a traffic study and if or. Why they opted or their thoughts on why not having one or will they require one? But uh, what are your thoughts on it? And Ms. Powell, I see your hands up. We'll get to you in one second.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um. So. You know, just looking at the the comments from Ryan Shields, that's not something that he is recommending. Um, and we didn't get a recommendation from the county engineer to have a traffic study. Um, so I mean, that's basically what we base our. You know, our staff report on is the information that we get from them because they're the experts, so I mean, I I wouldn't. You know, I I don't think we have any information that that. Has been given to us to say that, yeah, we definitely need a traffic study to do this. Um, now that being said, you know, I I can't really tell you whether. You know, whether this is going to cause a huge problem or not. I mean, obviously, we've heard some anecdotal. Information about some of the the wrecks and the issues out there, um, so. I mean, that's something that you guys have to consider um with doing this. And the only time I believe that we've ever, and I'm not sure if we required it or not, but one of the. The paddocks application, I believe a traffic study was done for that application. Um, that was a much bigger project, though. It was about, I think, is a over a hundred. Lots, the preliminary plot, I think, might have been maybe two hundred lots. I can't even remember, but. Um, so that that was required, um, because they needed to see. Um, what was going to go on to the the highway from um the accesses there from. How Road in on the other, um, whether twenty lots warrants that? Again, I mean, there's. There's it hasn't been any indication given to us by, you know, the engineering folks that that's a necessary. Um, requirement at this point, so. Um, so that's, that's all I've got. Um, you know, if you guys feel like it's necessary, you know, obviously, it's it's. Within our purview to require that. Um, but. And it's it's only been done a few times and the only one that I remember is specifically is the. Um, paddocks, but there there may have been other other ones that we require that too, but. Um, that was before my time, so or when I came on anyways, so.
Mr. Chairman, this is uh Keith Kennedy. Uh, I I think. There's some clarification there too to what I said earlier and and it's my understanding. Of the ro- of a road impact study that those are, if we believe there are impacts to county roads. Where uh YDOT has the purview on state highways and interstates and and those roads. My impression of what that calls for is impacts to county roads. Or to roads within a development and. And so that that's one reason for the the statement that I made earlier that. Uh, that's really in in YDOT's purview. Now, the variance for the cul-de-sac link is entirely in our purview and I would support that. I'm comfortable with the size of those, the roads. I guess there's a. Question for the county engineer, if he's available, is if he's comfortable with that uh zero point three slope. Uh, himself and my recollection from reading it a couple of days earlier was that. Uh, he recommended approval of that variance. And if somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, I'd welcome it.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy, I believe you're uh correct on that. Um. I see Mr. Paulson's hand up. Mr. Paulson will uh get back to you and then Mr. Hinckley. I apologize, we're in the middle of the discussion right now, but we're gonna get some answers here, then we're gonna go directly back to you. So, Mr. Paulson, um, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, uh, so if we break it down to the two roads that we're, we have in there, so. The West Street Road has about. Probably eight lots on it and the East Street Road has twelve lots on it, so really your impact is very minimal to the to the. The highway right away. So, you know, you're talking very low debt, you know, low amount of traffic going to be be using these roads. I mean, it's not going to be like a major highway, so. I I think that if you look back at it and dissect it, you'll see that there's really the the roads are low impact and not going to be traveled. Very much at all, just when the the residents leave or come or go, whichever. So that's, that's why I don't think that traffic impact study would be needed.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Appreciate that. Um, we'll get back in line here. Uh, Mr. Hinckley. Um, we're in discussion and and um. Uh, you're up and I hope that that maybe answered some questions. Continue on.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so. I mean, I'm not sure what a traffic study is. It just struck me that that's, that's an issue that's uh that's serious, so. Is our understanding that? That uh YDOT has looked at what they think the impact of a twenty lot subdivision at Harmony. Would be and they felt that was not a problem. I mean, I. I that it is, it is their highway and they're supposed to know about these things. So am I correctly understanding? What the communication of YDOT has been and that they affirmatively said, we think this is okay. That's a question for whoever can answer. Thank you.
So. Tammy uh gave me these emails between her and Mike Getther. Uh, back in July when this was a proposed twenty-four lot subdivision. And he said that no turn lengths would be warranted for either access.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Hinckley?
No, thank you.
For discussion. Okay, thank you. Um. Ms. Powell, I did see your hand up. Um, was there something you wanted to add to that?
Uh, Joe just just said what I was gonna point out. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Powell. Um, and then, um, I guess, uh, discussion or comments that maybe I have is is. I'd echo those statements of uh Mr. Kennedy and and uh Ms. Hanning about the uh. Game family friends, uh fences, um, uh, maybe being added to the. To the plat, um, either the plat or within the covenants, whatever is sufficient, but other than that, those are my comments. So we'll go ahead and move on from there. Um, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. Um, at this point. Um, we're looking for either an approval, a denial, or to table the Harley Acres subdivision. So I'll need a motion from a member of the commission.
So a move for approval, but so a motion by Mr. Spiegelberg to approve, is that correct, John?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion first for approval of the preliminary plat from Mr. Spiegelberg. Do we have a second?
Kennedy and I'll second and I will uh move an amendment to that to. First of all, grant the variance that was on slope that was approved by the. Uh, suggested by the county engineer. And. And also uh. Approve the length of the cul-de-sacs. And finally, to require on the final plat that uh wildlife friendly fencing. In accordance with Wyoming game and fish regulations is required.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and take a vote. Uh, Mr. Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, I motion carries. Um, now we'll move on to the preliminary plat, move on to the Board of County Commissioners. Everybody that was here that spoke for or.
Or did we? I'm sorry, did we approve the amendment or did we approve the motion? I thought we were voting on the amendment.
Um, okay, let's let's go, but let's step back here. You're correct. I was wrong. Uh, the amendment. Um, so the amendment has been added to the motion. With uh five all voting in favor of the uh approval. With the amendment added, the amendments added to it. Okay, now we'll go ahead and take a vote on the um. Uh, the motion. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Nay.
Yes, Ms. Hanning.
Sorry, I I said, um, no, just because I am waiting for details on zoning, I guess I can't vote yes here. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, I motion carries four to one and moves on to the Board of County Commissioners. With the amendments that we approved. We'll move on to the next application. Uh, the next application is the Rock Creek, Rock Creek Wind. Um. Project, Mr. Gerch or Mr. Um. Willis, would you guys give us that information, and before we do that, Mister Spiegelberg has a comment. Yeah, so Mister Spiegelberg has a doctor's appointment, and he's going to have to leave our meeting here, so just so everybody knows, Mister. Spiegelberg is going to have to leave, so.
That's correct.
All right, John, we'll see you at next month's meeting, okay, you take care. Do we need a motion to excuse Member Spiegelberg? What would you feel comfortable with?
If, if, if you want such a motion, I'll make it, I don't know that it's necessary, but sure, let's, I'll move, we excuse Commissioner Spiegelberg.
All right, do we have a second?
Kennedy will second the motion.
All right, and Mister Kennedy.
I was just going to say aye.
Aye, okay, Miss Hanning. Mister Hinckley. And Chairman Moore, myself, I, and make sure you put that in the notes that Mister Spiegelberg had to leave at four eleven. Today in XR meeting, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John, take care, drive safe. David or Mister Willis, would you guys give us the rundown on the Rock Creek Wind LLC application? Thank you.
So, we've got before us the Rock Wind Energy Project Application. The applicant is Rock Creek Wind LLC, the project owner is also the same. Landowners are the Wheatland Irrigation District, Rock River Ranches, Inc., LaBeau Family Limited Partnership. Rock Creek Heritage LLC, Audrey Brokaw and Booth Land and Livestock LLC. This project name is Rock Creek Wind LLC. Number of turbines will be a hundred and fourteen turbines that are in Albany County. The height of the turbines will be five hundred and ninety-one feet, maximum rotor diameter is five hundred and ninety-two feet. This project's located on approximately thirty-two thousand six hundred and twenty acres in Albany County. North of Interstate eighty and south of Highway thirteen along the western border of the county. They're requesting the west wax permit for this project. Those, the land is own, rural or agricultural. Current land use is, it's just open land ranch land, the project may be accessed from Cooper Cove Road and Dutton Creek Road. Surrounding a land use and zoning, the project area is surrounded by property zone agricultural. And state and federal land, the property is currently used for ag purposes. The county engineer reviewed this, had no other comments other than. He wanted to know when the foundation calculations and those other details will be provided, which that's all required. After the permits approved and before they move forward with construction. The Department of Transportation, Ryan Shields reviewed this. They require a road use agreement for affected state routes, the traffic control plan, so all owl. How hauling companies must have proper evidence and certificates. Any modifications to Interstate eighty interchanges require federal highway administration approval. If they ensure wide out right-of-way markers are not disturbed or have a plan in place, if they are. Utility licenses must be obtained from the district maintenance office. And approach modifications on the whiteout routes required permitting through the district traffic office. Game and Fish reviewed this, Amanda Loesch, the Habitat Protection Supervisor, has requested an updated site characterization study. Monitoring plan, minimization of impacts to big game and crucial winter range habitat. Protection of raptors, nests and habitat, minimize bat mortality, minimize noxious weeds and invasive plants. Protection of aquatic habitat for sensitive species and prevention of aquatic invasion of species, or preventions. I think I said that, but, you know, Albany County Fire District One. Luke Hawkins, the chairman noted that the, the district was not identified as a local fire authority having jurisdiction. At the time that this was written, that was the, the comment, I believe we received information since then from the. The applicant that rectified that, but, how many county run bridge supervisor or superintendent Rob Fisher. Noted that this project will have heavy impacts on a couple of county roads and a road maintenance agreement is needed before construction. All of these, these reviews should have been can, or attached as a mentor. Attachments in this, this staff report, the end of the staff report. So go through the requirements, notice was provided as required. Roads, the traffic study provided by the applicant has identified a number of hall routes. Alternatives, the actual hall routes have not been determined at this time. Routes may include I eighty, US Highway thirty, Wyoming Highway fifteen. In addition, potential access to project sites includes county road five fifty-seven Cooper Cove Road. And county road fifty-seven Dunn Creek Road, the, the traffic study, I will note, did not include any of the county roads. And that will need to be updated. Yeah, all required documentation and permitting required for this project. By YDOT and Albany County Run Bridge Department, as noted above and described in the attached comments, must be completed. Prior to construction activity beginning on the site, the applicant must provide detailed mapping of hall routes. And updated traffic study for the project area that includes county roads prior to any site work beginning. Interference, there is approximately thirty-five microwave paths in the vicinity. The preliminary turbine locations will not impact the existing microwave pass according to the microwave study included for the project. Documentation that the microwave transmission providers have been notified must be provided prior to final approval. Emergency response plan and emergency response plan has been provided and routed to the apple applicant. Or by the applicant to applicable entities, according to the applicant, we just need some documentation that shows that. I did send this application to all, all of these folks, so they should have received the application. For this project, which has that emergency response plan in it. They provided the decommissioned financial assurance or the plan that was required. Design criteria, they'll be painted an off-white or light gray color, just like the ones that are nearby. Morning signs will be visible near transformers and substations. The applicant has not determined. What FAA safety lighting will be used, they're looking into the use of aircraft detection lighting system. Albany County does require that the use of ADLS safety lighting. Unless they, the FAA doesn't approve it. But reasonable effort should be made or must be made by the applicant to gain approval of the ADLS lighting from FAA. Life building insurance has been provided, a waste management plan is provided. Decommissioning reclamation plan has been provided, and letters of consent from the property owners have been provided. The applicant has provided the required site plan. So when I wrote this, I hadn't, didn't have all of this information, so I'll kind of adjust. What I've received recently in what I'm telling you about the findings necessary for approval. So, the, the required site plan has been provided at this point. The proposed wax project shall not adversely affect the public health, safety and welfare of the community. The staff position is the applicant is sufficiently addressed, the standard is the Albany County zoning resolution adopted for the public health. Safety and welfare of the community, the wax project will not adversely affect the public interest by overburdening county services. Staff position, the applicant will need to complete the road improvement maintenance agreement with the county. And YDOT prior to construction, this will ensure that the proposed project will not overburn county services. The, the applicant has addressed the following impacts, economic and social impacts, the project's expected to. Bring in thirty-one point eight million dollars in local sales and use taxes. Approximately eighty-three million over thirty-year project life of property income tax. And then annual wind energy production tax will bring approximately five fifty-one point five million. Over three hundred or thirty, thirty-year project life. Air quality, they will, they've addressed this impact. They'll have to get permits and things for that through DEQ, water quality, there's usually not a whole lot of impact for water quality. However, the applicant should work with Wyoming Game and Fish to ensure impacts to, to aquatic species. Our address minimizing impacts to wetlands and repairing areas should be a priority during the micro sighting phase of the turbine location planning. So the applicant has sufficiently addressed its impact, general notices. Let's see, a noise study was provided, it was done for a specific, specific versus turbine model. One thing that it did say in that, that study is that if it, if it wasn't that specific turbine model, then basically the study needed to be redone. And so, I would definitely think that would need to be addressed, if, so if they do change the turbine model. They'll need to, to provide us a new noise study, the one thing I will note is this is an area that has view. Few inhabitable structures in the area, so regardless, it should have minimal impact on folks around there. Soil disturbance. The applicant addressed that impact, wildlife impacts, Rock Creek has been working with Game and Fish and US Fish and Wildlife. Game and Fish have provided a review of their concerns, the applicant should continue to coordinate with Game and Fish and US Wildlife. Fish and Wildlife Service to address those concerns, and the cultural impact. They've been working with the, the shipo office, historic preservation office of the state. To make sure that the impacts on cultural resources in the project area are addressed. Wildlife and cultural resources, I think, are a big thing that they will have to deal with during the industrial siding process as well. So there'll be a second look at all that, so. Findings effect, the summary of the application information, reviews, summary. Of the wind energy conversion systems, permit requirements and finds necessary for approvals listed in the report are incorporated and herein as findings effect. Conclusions law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter five, section twelve. Brief analysis, the applicant has generally addressed the impacts associated with this project. The applicant is required to enter into road maintenance agreement with Albany County prior to commencement of the construction activities at the project site. Some of the reports and information were not finalized at the time of the application, so any, anything that wasn't finalized, that should be provided. The final report should be provided by the applicant. So staff recommendation and all for this as well, because I've received some of the information that was missing. So staff recommends. Approval of the Rock Creek Wind Energy Project Wind Energy Conversion Systems Permit. Adopting incorporating the findings effect conclusions laws as, as listed in the staff report. Excuse me, and with the following conditions. An updated noise analysis is provided and approved by the county prior to the, to construction if needed. An updated traffic study that includes county roads that will be used for access to the project site is provided and approved by the county prior to construction. Documentation that the local emergency response agencies have been provided, document. Provided a copy of the proposed. Enter emergency response plan and coordinated with, I believe this is done, we just need documentation for that. And the documentation for the microwave transmission providers and local emergency service providers have been provided. The project summary and the site plan for this project prior to final approval. And then the last, I guess the last two are just all other agreements and documentation provided by the Albany County. Required by the Albany County zoning resolution is provided prior to the commencement of the construction activity of the project sites, that include like the. Road maintenance agreements and the, the, the site plan with the, the updated. Turbine locations that's micro cited and, and all that, and then any other studies or reports that were not finalized with submission of the application should be provided. So with that. If there's any questions, I would be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you, David. We'll go around and ask commissioners if they have any questions for staff, Mister Kennedy.
I don't have a question for staff, but I will pose one for the applicant when they come up next, and, and that is. To briefly explain the micro sighting, and I noted on the site plan that there were. Several alternate locations, and what would determine whether or not you use those alternates. And would any other. Sites that essentially you indicated you would use, would those be deleted or would the. Alternates be additional, and with that, I turn it over to someone else for questions.
Thank you, Mister Kennedy, Miss Hanning. Any questions for staff?
Thank you, Mister Chair, and thank you, Mister Gurch, for your presentation, you're. Going to be quite, you already are an expert on wind conversion projects, I'd say. So just a couple of questions from looking through the application that I just wanted to follow up on. I saw, I'm just curious, it looked like there was going to be a meeting in late October to obtain more state land. And I, I wondered if you know the outcome of that.
I think that probably best asked to the applicant. Our application is, just so you know, they just cover the private land, so we don't review the state portions, so.
Right, yeah, no, it, it's a, a lot of moving parts with a lot of entities all having to issue permits. At the same time, some contingent on each other's and, yeah, it's kind of like wanting to avoid the rotors. Okay, I guess another question, I noticed that it didn't look like a public notice had been made. There was a discussion in the application about not being able to do that until certain dates were set. So I just wanted to make sure that that step has in fact taken place, because I, I noted that there, there were no public comments. Attached to the staff report, so I just wondered where that stood.
Yeah, so there's a number of requirements that, that needed to be met, which have been met, signs have been posted on. I believe the two county roads that are possible accesses for this property. They, they did before, they turned in the application, provided notice to all the, the folks that might have. What do you call it, subsurface rights, whatever, you know, mineral rights, mineral rights or whatever, so they, they notified them. They also notified all of the adjacent landowners within five miles. And then, yeah, it was posted in the paper for this meeting. This, this is in an area that, like I said, is sparsely populated, so that could, we didn't receive any comments. So, nothing is, came in and, but it has been noticed properly, so.
Okay, thanks, I, I wanted to just make sure that stuff was, was followed. And can you tell me, I, I didn't get a chance to go on to the Industrial Siding Council. Are, are you aware of where things are in their process? My, my only experience so far is with, with rail wind tie, and it, it seemed like that was. Going through industrial siding, kind of ahead of coming through the county door a little bit, and I, I just wondered how these are tracking, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, so Mister Chair, the, that, they have not submitted their application to industrial siding at this point. And they can address where they're at in the project, I think they're still finalizing some of the information that's required for the application, but it's. It has not been submitted, as far as I know, with industrial siding at this point.
I guess, along, along to follow up with that, it seems like once industrial sighting is involved.
Once industrial sighting is involved, it precludes our involvement in a couple areas. Most notably wildlife and the the letter that you received from Amanda Loach. It raised a lot of concerns for me. That the information in front of us so far has some has some. I don't know, absence of information or misinformation or just just it's, it sounds like things aren't quite lined up. With what's been presented in in what she thinks is out there, so. It makes it makes it uncomfortable for me to assess this. Because of just wanting to understand. The cumulative impacts to wildlife from all of these wind projects together in our county. You know, kind of like looking at the cumulative impacts of 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 traffic on the highways, I'm. I'm wondering about the cumulative impact to wildlife and, you know, I was particularly concerned about. How on one hand our state is investing in. A mule deer corridor that comes into this area. And on the other hand here, we might be giving approval to something that adds yet another stress to that. That very thing our state is trying to invest in, so I. I'm I'm struggling with some aspects of this project around the wildlife piece. And I don't know what what if any reassurance you can give me about how that stuff is going to play out.
Well, and you hit the nail on the head, this isn't because it's going to Industrial Siding Council, we can't use that as a criteria. That's not a finding that we have to make. But yeah, I I I mean, I think it would be. I mean, we should direct, you know, with 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 those recommendations, we should definitely recommend that they continue to. Work with game and fish because yeah, there's there's a pretty good mule deer population there that they're trying to protect. And I believe there's some mule deer corridors where they have those. You know, crossing things, the little tunnels that go under the highway that are right along this project, so. I think those are areas that are, you know, specifically should be looked at and, you know, and I agree there's, you know. I I have a little concern there as well, and so it's like I hope the applicant will will be able to work with game and fish and address those. So and I would hope that Industrial Siding Council will make sure that's done as well, so. So I can reassure you, sorry, Mark.
Well, you know, I guess, Mr. Gerch, it's reassurance to know that you share similar concerns about the project. And I guess that that will conclude my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning, Mr. Hinckley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of a context question and like like Commissioners Hanning and Kennedy, some of these might be better for the applicant, but. What what about Carbon County, do we know how they're handling this, I guess I'm starting the question with David, in that it spans the border. Are their rules significantly different than ours, is there a conflict, where where does it stand in Carbon County? Or if we know, maybe the applicant can address that better.
Yeah, probably the applicant can address that better, I mean, I know that they're in a similar area with the process. Because I sent the application to them and they sent their application to me, so. But, you know, nothing's been, I I don't know where they're at, I don't know if they've held their meetings, I didn't check on that. As for their regulations, I would think they're pretty similar, most of the counties have pretty similar regulations. And we all follow the minimum state requirements. There's a little bit of deviation there where we go a little bit above and beyond in a few different areas. Each county has their kind of own flair to it, but but they're pretty similar in their basic package, I would say, but maybe Chase can address that later for us.
Okay, thank you. Then picking up on what Commissioner Hanning said, I. Again, as a kind of a legal point, maybe I'm reading these all things more closely than I should, and it's a reflection of the. Of perhaps the the planning director's reluctance to to be very heavy handed, but I think the word should. Has little business in a in a permit or a or a legal document, so. I would be inclined to replace every should in the staff report with either shall or. In the case of the game and fish recommendations, remind us. Our regulations do preclude us weighing in there, so. One I'd like to say shall coordinate with the game and fish rather than should, but can can we do that? And I I don't find those specific exemptions in the regs, but I remember seeing them on rail tie, so. Talk to us, Mr. Gerch, if you could about our role in wildlife.
Um, so there's a, so we do require a number of of things when we evaluate, you know, from about the wildlife. In our regulations, like we require the studies that go to. To the. Industrial setting to be provided to us. So where where the the deviation is, is that we do have a, the section where there's the findings that we have to make. It lists through the different findings and the last two, I believe, are cultural and wildlife. And right after that, it says if those, you know, if these things will be reviewed by Industrial Siding Council, then. It's it's outside of our purview to look at those. So I don't know, we might have some conflicting language, because, you know, there's another area where we require all these these reports. Why are we requiring them if you're not incorporating them into what we're doing here, right? So and to to answer what what we can and can't require there. You know, I mean, I guess, I guess to request or to require that they coordinate with game and fish. I don't know if that's outside of, I mean, we're not making the finding that everything is great with wildlife, you know, or that it's not. We're just saying that this is a requirement that we're going to put on the permit that they coordinate with them. So maybe that's okay to do. But I think I would defer to our county attorney on that, so. Like to do, but I just thought if we can, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I I I see that language, and I guess the plain reading of it would be that while. While we are, while we are required to find that it will not significantly negative impact wildlife. Then further it says if it's before ISD, then then we can't say that, so I. Like our lawyer could tell us which one preempts, but I think the sense that on rail tie was that that we're not in the wildlife business. So. The last of your conditions. Would still draw my attention in saying any other studies or reports that were not finalized should be provided. Any objections to changing that to a shall?
No, they have to be required.
I mean, they have to, so anywhere they have to do it, let's not, let's not kind of make it nudge, let's say you're going to, you're going to do this. So yeah, with those concerns, the other one I I greatly concerned about is the lighting. And I know that was a discussion with rail tie, but again, the regulations under which this application has moved forward. Leave that up to FAA. Is that, is that correct?
Well, so. I mean, I think we should require it. I mean, we, the the regulations require ADLS lighting unless the FAA says that they can't use it. So that's, if I didn't portray that, that's what we should be doing, we should be requiring that unless FAA says that we can't.
Okay, that's that's my understanding, so with that understanding, I'm happy to move forward with the. With the rest of the question, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley, I don't have any questions for staff at this time. At this time, the applicant or applicant's representative would like to address this commission, this would be your opportunity.
Mr. Chair, I believe Chase has a presentation he'd like to give to, and I've made him a co-host, so hopefully he can make that work, so.
All right, we'll just wait for that, Mr. Marston, go right ahead when you're ready.
Great, thank you all, let me just try to figure out the technology side of this. All right. Now. I have to ask what everyone's looking at.
First slide of a slide set.
All right, so so it works, step one, great, well, Chairman Commissioners, thank you all for taking the time today. I know that we're two hours and forty minutes into this and I'm asking you to listen more about a project, but I wanted to introduce Rock Creek Wind again. I know this is not anything new for a lot of you, I. Familiar faces here from our presentation to the planning and zoning last spring. And this presentation is not all too dissimilar from that, but there are some some updates that I want to share, especially as it relates to the Albany County application. So. Let's see if I can. Scroll, all right, great, so before jumping into Rock Creek itself, just wanted to talk about Invenergy and our team here. So my name is Chase Marston, as as David introduced, I'm the development lead for this project. I'm joined from Invenergy on this call by James Williams, he's the vice president out of our our Western office here. Also, Amy Watcher is our environmental lead and we also have. Our our environment consultant on the line, Clint King, who actually might have had to drop. Actually, looks like he's still here, great, so we have Clint King from SWCA. So Amy and Clint are environmental team, we also have Ryan Harding, our internal lawyer, and then Greg Weiss is our our local counsel, he's out of. Cheyenne with Pence and McMillan. So. We have quite the Invenergy crew on the line here today. Speaking of Invenergy, I did want to make a quick note about the company as a whole, we are far larger than just this Rock Creek Wind Project. We are a leading international privately owned renewable energy company. We have over a hundred wind projects, over almost fifty solar projects and a growing number of storage and transmission projects across the world. And while we are a company that does have a a large geographical footprint, our focus is always still local. And and we really do like to involve ourselves in the communities that we are developing projects. You can see that impact is really important to us here. In southwestern Wyoming specifically, we already have a strong history of success with developing and. Projects that did ultimately get constructed in our under operation right now. This right here is actually a picture of Ecola Flats and TB Flats up in Carbon County, just north of Medicine Bow. Where we developed seven hundred and fifty megawatts of energy and now there are thirty two permanent jobs and millions of dollars of tax benefit from those two projects. As Rock Creek Wind is picking up where TB and Ecola left off with development in southeastern Wyoming, we hope to. Grow our relationship with Albany as we have with Carbon with these two projects, so we look forward to working with you all through this project and hopefully more in the future as well. Now we get to talk about Rock Creek Wind and a lot of this is in the application already and and mentioned by David earlier, but I did want to hit on a few key topics here. As is clear from the application and some of the maps, Rock Creek Wind is actually two phases, we are doing this because we have two points of interconnect. We're connecting both at Aeola Substation up near Medicine Bow and then Foot Creek Substation over by Foot Creek Wind Project. It's going to be five hundred ninety megawatts total and there will be up to a hundred twenty nine turbines total. Of those, a hundred nineteen will be, that's actually in Albany County, including the state land that is in Albany County and. But but likely less, and I would like to point out here and and also answer Commissioner Kennedy's question too about some of the alternates and what we're doing with those. Let's see, I'm just going to jump forward to. The map here, so you can see the the current layout of the project. Where we have our Carbon County and our Albany County, and then there are these turbines over on the the southeast side that are blue. So those are alternates, so. And and I'll explain those a little bit in a minute, but as we're just looking at total numbers here, we are permitting. Up to a certain amount of wind turbines, but as we go through the process, we will likely be eliminating some based on feedback that we get from. Both the engineer team and more importantly, the environmental team and. We can answer some of those environmental questions as we get on further here, but we do take their feedback into consideration very seriously, and so. We want to be able to have alternates so that when we discuss layout with them, there is some flexibility in our design. So back up to where we were. The planned turbines are, we we haven't selected our final turbine type yet, and that will, based on the megawatt size of each turbine, impact how many actual turbines that we. Are going to be using to achieve that five hundred ninety megawatts. And. So that in conjunction with deciding our final layout, which we will do probably this spring and and winter. When we get some more information back from our environmental studies. We will, we'll be able to narrow it down and and get a much better idea of the turbine count, the turbine type and which turbine sites we'll be using. Something to note about Rock Creek Wind that is a is a factor, a major factor of why we chose to site where we did. We, as you noted at the beginning of this presentation, have very few landowners that are involved in this project, and that's because it is a very rural. Agricultural focused area, it's very open and there is not a lot of existing infrastructure in the area. And so we we want to be able to have plenty of space where we could, we could. Have as little impact on the existing properties as we can. We also wanted to be located near existing wind farms, so we are actually butting upright to McFadden Ridge Wind Farm up there, so I'm sure you're all familiar with it. You can see it from the highway and and that's the general area of where we are. Some key dates, our target operation date is the end of twenty twenty four and the target construction date is really the spring of twenty twenty three. So that's about an eighteen month construction window. So the location, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, just to the northeast of Highway eighty here, we're south of Highway thirteen. North of the of Highway eighty and and generally east of Arlington and McFadden, which is right up in here. We have thirty two hundred, more than thirty two hundred acres in Albany County, almost fifteen thousand in Carbon County. The project itself is located exclusively on private and state land. And I'll actually take this opportunity to address one of your questions, Commissioner Hanning. For state land, just want to make sure I can answer all of these. For state land, we are in close discussion with the Office of State Land and Investment Team, and that's been a discussion that has been. I don't really want to say back and forth for a while, but we have been talking to them for a really long time about leasing their property and. We just yesterday were were finalizing our lease, but. And for which they they will then present to the the board, the Office of State Land Investments Board to for approval. We determined that there wasn't enough time to review that before their December hearing, which they hold the first week of the month every two months. So we we aren't going to be able to get on to their agenda for December, but we will on February. And as part of this application, they did provide a letter that said we will be finalizing this by the end of the year, this is somewhat of an unexpected, but. For no other reason than it just takes a little longer to do this process. And so there will be writing a a letter to the same effect, saying that we'll we'll be on the February docket. And we'll feel much better about having the board have time to review it before the actual hearing. So state land investment, we have a really good relationship working with them right now and and we have no concerns about that, but it is going to be February instead of December. The other point I want to make about this area is the the history of wind and and the history in this area, Foot Creek. Wind Farm, which is right above Arlington there, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, it's being repowered right now, so they're getting some larger turbines. That's one of the first wind farms in Wyoming back from the nineties, and so this area is no stranger to being able to harness the natural resource that is there. So to elaborate on that, Y Carbon and Albany Counties. There, in addition to that abundant natural resource here that we have in in southeastern Wyoming. There is also the infrastructure necessary to be able to to carry that power to the load and where the demand is. Gateway South, Gateway West and and some of the infrastructure that Pacific Core has been building, make this an ideal area to be looking at wind. Similarly, as mentioned before, there there are not that many landowners that we're dealing with, and there is a a a a a large amount of acreage per landowner here. That gives us space to spread out our turbines, these are larger turbines than some of the previous wind farms, like the McFadden Ridge. Or the old Foot Creek Wind Farm, so we do need more space for turbines and we also found that. And we also found that the landowners that we're working with are willing, able, and wonderful to work with. And so that makes it very easy. And lastly, the previous projects that have come through the area have proven successful, so we are going to try to continue that trend. Here is just a brief map. This was in the application as well, but I just wanted to show some of the other wind farms in the area and their proximity to Rock Creek here. You can see that though the number of turbines aren't that much greater than the ones in the area, we do require more space so that it can be spread out, which is more similar to TB Flats and Echolat Flats in terms of space per turbine required. These are some site photos. We have spent some time on the project property and mainly to be microsighting and Commissioner Kennedy to answer your question here. Microsighting is a very important part of our final layout design. We do need to physically get out there and we can only do so much research by looking at maps and studies alone. So we physically go out and walk around and go to each site that we do anticipate would be good for a turbine and evaluate it in person. So while we will be getting some studies back this winter and while we will be having a good crack at making an updated layout, it won't really be finalized till the snow melts and we can get back and stand on each point and assess it, just to make sure that it is what we expect. But you can see here, it's very open. It's very agricultural focused. There are a few old buildings that are no longer inhabited and there are plenty of cattle to keep you company. To elaborate a little bit more on how we pick our sites specifically, and this is a lot to do with the microsighting before we even get out there. We do look at the topography. We take a lot of engineering considerations into account. We look at existing infrastructure, so we do do plenty of surveys to try to understand what is out there and what to avoid. And you see here irrigation dishes, that's a big one because we are on wheeling irrigation district land for a large part of our property, and so we are working around their irrigation system. We also have had five years, four years of data that we've been collecting all over the project that will inform us of where the best wind is, so we can try to shift our turbines to make sure that we're making them as efficient as possible. And lastly, we do coordinate with the landowners. We coordinate with, I guess this comes from the FAA. We did submit our original layout just to begin eliciting some feedback. So we have started that process. We will resubmit with the FAA once we have a final turbines layout. So here is our schedule moving forward. This is a very rough schedule, but it does touch on one thing that was asked by Commissioner Hanning here is the ISC process. So we do like to have our county permits and that process started before we do the industrial siting application. It's helpful to stagger those a little bit and give this the time and energy that it deserves to go through the counties as well. So that is something that we'll be submitting December sixth. So as you recall, we submitted this in September, so that gives a few months of separation to make sure that we can address any, anything that needs to be addressed prior to that application. That does mean that a few of the studies that we will be submitting for the Industrial Siting Council are just now finishing up. So an example of those are that were actually in, and the handout here is the reconnaissance level assessment and the environmental site assessment that focused not necessarily specifically on the environmental side, but definitely on the project area. Those are being finalized now for the industrial siting application and we will be able to provide that to the county when they're complete. All right. And I know a big question that is on the table is the environmental work we're doing and making sure that we do answer all these questions and take everything into consideration. And I do want to reassure you that we are working really closely with Game and Fish and we do take their feedback very seriously. We've met with them twice this fall alone, just to make sure that they're aware of what we're doing, what our studies look like. Clint, if he is on the line with SWCA, has been working with us to create really every study that we need and can think of. I do want to explain quickly why it looks like they're split into two here. So our original project area was focused on the northern half of our current project area. And this past year, we signed more land to the south, which is primarily bootland and livestock land. And so that had a bit of a lag in its environmental surveys that we've done for those. So we, while some of the studies are complete for the northern half, the expansion area, those will be finishing up this fall, this winter, and so we'll be able to use those to incorporate them into our final layout. The one I do want to point to specifically here is that site characterization report that was asked about. That is only for the northern half. The southern half, the expansion area, will also be complete on a similar timeline to the reconnaissance level assessment and the phase one environmental site assessment. So those are, those are en route shortly here. So similar to our projects that we developed, Echolat and TB Flats, I'm not sure if you're all familiar with that, but we had a relationship with Pacific Corps on that and that they were our off-take partner and we developed the project. And then they, as part of a development transfer, they then constructed it and they operated. Similar for Rock Creek, we submitted a bid for their RFP and made their final shortlist for a build transfer agreement, meaning we will develop the project and we will build it. And then Pacific Corps and Rocky Mountain Power will be the ultimate owners and operators for the project. And as the build transfer agreement goes, excuse me, we're currently negotiating that with Pacific Corps this fall and probably into the early winter, but we're hopeful that that'll be finalized in the near future. So this was touched on in the packet as well, but I did just want to highlight some of the local benefits here. This project is primarily in Albany County, so this, though it is split between Carbon and Albany County, Albany County will be able to see probably the vast majority of these economic benefits here. But we do anticipate up to four hundred and fifty construction jobs, closer to an average of two ninety throughout the construction lifecycle, and then thirty to thirty-five full-time operators and maintenance staff. Over the project lifetime, we do expect a hundred and sixty-five million in local taxes and this all being able to harvest that new crop that is the wind. One topic that I do want to talk about, though it is not part of this process, it is very relevant to the project. So I did want to address it with you all here is our transmission plan. We do, as mentioned, have two transmission lines that we'll be building for this. There is a short one that goes over to Foot Creek Substation. That's about nine miles. That goes through private and state land. And it's, it will be following an existing transmission line. It's actually the McFadden Ridge Transmission Line back to the same substation. So we believe it's pretty minimal impact because for almost its entire length outside of the project boundary, it does follow something that is going to be almost identical in structure. The other transmission line is a little bit longer. That one goes up to Aeola Substation. It's thirty-eight miles long and the majority of which is in Carbon County. I actually should mention the Gentai Line for Foot Creek is also entirely in Carbon County. But the Aeola Substation is a bit longer and it will be a bit more involved in that it does go through private state land as well as BLM land. We are in discussion with the Rollins BLM Field Office about getting the right of way. And through that, we are completing the environmental assessment of that transmission line. And this is just a quick slide. Have spoken with some folks who are on the call today at one of these, but we have had some open houses. We held two here in Laramie and one in Rollins, just to make sure that the public has an opportunity to ask any questions. We do believe in full transparency and share as much information as we can about the project. And so we had, we had good turnout and were able to answer some good questions from landowners or interested parties. In terms of publications, we have been published in Rollin, Saratoga, and Laramie Publications. And let's see, so for the public notice, again, Commissioner Hanning to answer your question. We, the reason that in the application we couldn't yet send public notices is because the requirement, because the requirement did have us give information about the public hearings. At the time of the application, those weren't set, so we did have to wait until we had set dates to send those out. But we did send before the application to both the mineral owners, as is mandated by the regulation, but also voluntarily sent out information to everyone within five miles of the project boundary to let them know of our application and also to invite them to the open houses. And then we did the same thing, inviting everyone within five mile boundary and mineral rights owners to these hearings as well. And so the information did get out and unfortunately, no comments were sent in, or maybe fortunately. So moving on, the last thing I want to touch on is something that David had put in the review as well, is the fact that we do have a traffic study. We had a contractor, a logistician, do a full haul route traffic feasibility analysis. There was, as mentioned, a shortcoming in that it did stop as it exited the state and interstate roads here. So we are having them as part of this condition here. And I know that we're required to get the county roads assessed for traffic impact as well prior to any construction. We felt it was, it was worth trying to get this completed before the Board of County Commissioners hearings, just so they had all the information possible. Unfortunately, we couldn't turn it around in time for this hearing, but our aim is to have that for December sixth. And I just wanted to show the roads, the county roads that we'll be looking at in this expanded traffic study. This is County Road, State Road twelve here, which turns into County Road fifty-seven or Dunton Creek. We have some potential access points along the county road along here, so we're going to be studying that from the north. I guess I should say from the north and south because there's Cooper Cove Road exit here and Albany County Road fifty-seven. It kind of bounces back and forth over the line here and becomes County Road twelve. And in Carbon County, we're studying that whole road as well and as well as its exit point off of Highway thirteen from the north. So pretty much any, well, any county road that is going to be impacted will be studied in this traffic analysis, as well as any state roads that we think might be required for access to those county roads, even if the possibility of using these are slim. So that, I believe, covers most of the questions. Commissioner Hinckley, the one that I think I missed was Carbon County. Similar to the Industrial Siting Council, we like to stagger our applications a little bit. In particular with Carbon and Albany County, we didn't want our hearings to fall on the same day. So that is one week in time ahead of this application. So we had our public hearing with their Board of, their Planning and Zoning Commission last week, and they did unanimously approve us and recommend, recommend approval to their Board of County Commissioners. We had similar questions over there and the presentation. And so we felt good about coming out of that with their approval and felt like we had good support from Carbon County. And did I, did I miss any of your questions? I'm sure that more will come up from this presentation as well. So maybe I can start a blank slate here and we can start with any, any questions you have or if it's easier, I can send it back to you, Mr. Gurch. Great. Well, I welcome any questions from the commission.
Good job.
Thanks.
Ms. Hanning, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have just a couple of questions. And thank you for that presentation and answering some of my questions along the way. I appreciate that. I guess one, one thing I wondered about, because I know there's no issues with air quality attainment, but I wonder if someone in your group could, could tell me what you know about TMDLs being met in the surface water. I know there's a little stretch of non-attainment right around Boslar. I don't know if it's for E. coli or for sediment or both. And I was wondering, I couldn't tell, I didn't get into the detail on the map to figure out if any of the areas of potential disturbance would be draining into the tributaries that would lead into that area where the water quality is not meeting standards. Thanks.
Great. So I'm going to put up a map here, which is a little bit maybe easier to see. And I apologize, could you define TMDL?
Oh, sure. The total maximum daily load that the various waterways are allowed to receive so that they can attain various standards. I don't know if that stretch is trying to reach just recreational standards. I'm, I'm, I'm in over my head on the details, but I just know that they have non-attainment and not sure if any of this disturbance area could add to the problem.
I don't believe so in that we do not really impact many of the waterways. In fact, we, and we don't require much water for the project, so that's not something that we have a large impact on as a wind facility in general. If Amy Watcher is on the line or Clint King, it looks like he's still as well.
Hi Chase, this is Amy Watcher, so I can chime in for that. So we haven't performed a wetland delineation yet to figure out which waterways come within a certain buffer of our project facilities. Once we do that, we will certainly take a close look at the TMDLs, especially when we do the stormwater plan. We'll be able to plan for that and make sure that we are not discharging any sediment or anything that would contribute to those.
Thank you, Amy, for answering that question. And I believe those are all the questions I have right now. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hanning, for your questions. Mr. Kennedy?
I believe all my questions of the applicant have been answered. The only comment that I would make is on, on the wildlife issue. One reason that ISC is the one that gets that is because technically speaking, wildlife is the property of the state of Wyoming. So that's, that's some of the reasoning behind that.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And no questions for me. Great presentation. Thank you. At this point, we'll go ahead and open up this application to the public. Again, like I stated before, raise your hand on the participants list and we'll call on you. Please state your name and your address and let us know your thoughts, whether you're for or against this project. So I will start with the first hand up that I see on the participants list, which is Carling Abernathy.
Sorry, I had to unmute.
That's fine. Go right ahead.
It's Carling Abernathy and I have several questions. I'm a landowner within the five mile radius and our land is in Carbon County, but we're longtime Albany County residents. And I do feel this is very informative, but again, I'll say I have some questions. And one more comment, I don't see any of my relatives on the participation list. And that may be because it was so far away. If you had emphasized that it would be a Zoom meeting, there might be more participants in that regard. I also received the first letter about two days before the first hearing. And I don't think that's time enough. This last letter came in a timely fashion and it also came by certified mail, which I think gives it some weight. I realize it's expensive, but it's maybe a good idea for getting more participation. My questions are, with these projects, do the present landowners continue to own the land or does Pacific Corps become the owner?
Yeah, so the, it's a, it is a lease for the land, so the landowners still do own the land and we just own an easement for our facilities. So it's, it does stay, we aren't, we aren't purchasing all of the land for the project.
How long will be, and I realize I'm in favor of wind energy because it's renewable and I think that's a good, good thing, as I believe my relatives would be in favor also. However, how long do these stay on the land? You were talking about life of the project. Were you talking about the life of the project installation? Or how long will they be on? Or how long will they be on uh, in action? I know that Arlington ones, I think you call that Foot Creek, have been there for a long time.
Yeah, so the the Rock Creek um, project once built, the life cycle would be twenty five years. Um, after that twenty five years, I think it's really hard to say now what the conditions will look like, and and it could be that it's similar to the Arlington Wind Farm where um, if an agreeable will be, will be repowered and and will have uh, modern, modern wind turbines put up there, and you can see Arlington is a great example where the, I think they're replacing thirty plus some odd turbines with a eleven-ish turbines. And so you you can see that there's just significant improvement in technology. So the the project life cycle is, the the first term is is twenty five years, it could be longer than that, but I think it's really hard for us to say what that will look like in twenty five years at this point.
Okay, um, now the another thing that has come up is road impact. And is, uh, if you're going to have thirty five employees when it's permanent, I don't know what kind of road impact that would have. But in terms of building, is the road impact that you are hauling the turbines in, et cetera? Where where does the road impact come in? Because this is our, um, the Cooper Cove Road is our access to our land.
Yeah, good question, so the majority of the impact is that construction phase where there will be uh, a lot of workers and there will be a lot of delivery, both from the turbines and the construction uh, equipment necessary, like concrete and such. Um, and then the construction for the operation and maintenance, maintenance building and and substations. Um, that that is where most of the impact will be, and we will enter into road use agreements with the county, both Carbon and now Albany County, to make sure that um, that is done in a responsible way. We typically do um, have, we have standards for the roads that we will be using, just based on how how strong, durable, and wide they need to be for our construction deliveries, so um, it is uh, in our interest as well as the interest for the landowners who use them to make sure that those roads are are well maintained, well, well kept up and uh, and 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 constructed well.
Okay, um, I think this is my final question, although others could come up, I suppose, but um, you talked about transmission lines, and this is, I suppose not unusual, but it was unexpected to me. So you're planning to build from the north end of this project to the Foot Creek, whatever it is. You'll build another transmission line? Is that correct?
Yes, let me see here, if I can bring up the map, we can explain a little better too. Um, so if is, does this map adequately, are you, are you able to see the presentation, Carling?
I am, and I actually, I was wondering if that blue line stemming from the north end of the project is to Aeolus, or is that to Foot Creek?
Yeah, so that's the, that's the one that goes up to Aeolus, and and these, I I should say are very uh, tentative, where we are in discussion with all the landowners along the routes to finalize our, 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 our transmission route, so this is representative, but it is fairly close, given that uh, our goal was to follow the existing transmission line to Arlington and Foot Creek Substation. And then for Aeolus as well, we follow the existing uh, WAPA power line for about ninety percent of this this uh, length here, so um, that is fairly representative of what we'll be looking at. Um, I'm not sure I answered your question, were you just wondering if that blue one was to Aeolus?
Yes, it it, you did answer my question, and I didn't realize there was an existing power line there already for ninety percent of it. Um, uh, let me look at my list. I'm assuming you're going to be working on construction, probably only, let's say for a six month period because of the weather. So is that when it would have impact on the county roads, et cetera, for for construction?
Yeah, so starting in in, yeah, you have, you bring up a good point about weather. Um, where in the spring of twenty twenty-three, um, we're saying tentatively April and uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll begin construction when feasible in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, and that is when the impacts will will begin. And then by the end of construction, at the end of twenty twenty-four, that's when they'll subside and they'll revert back to um, uh, the only impact being those, those thirty to thirty-five uh, full-time employees.
Okay, thank you, you've answered my questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy. Though it's funny, I know people here in Laramie that have the same last name, they go by Abernathy, but I apologize that I called you Abernathy instead of Abernathy. Mr. Booth, looks like you're up next.
Yeah, hello, I'm Steve Booth, uh, address of three hundred Hunt Road. Uh, I represent Booth Land and Livestock and Booth Family, uh, we're one of the landowners involved in this project. And on behalf of the family, I'd like to say we're very much in support of the project. Uh, we feel this would be a great benefit and a productive use of the land, providing uh, a positive economic development impact with minimal impact to the land and our coexisting ranching operations. Uh, from, from a historical perspective, over the past fifteen to twenty years, we've had several wind energy firms make a run at us to try and get some sort of project put together. Um, seems to me like, i- if memory serves correctly, we've had three previous um, firms that 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 tried to to get a a project going with us, but ultimately, they were too biased towards the 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 wind development itself and and at the expense of the land and our our use of the land. Um, and energy has been very amenable to to protecting not just the land, but but our expectations as landowners and the requirements that that uh, that 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 we need for our continued historical ranching use. Um, they, they understand that this land is is not just our livelihood by our heritage. And uh, they worked very hard to come to an agreement that protects both that livelihood and our heritage, so we're 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 very pleased to be part of this project. Ultimately, we feel that this is the the right time and the right place to move forward and develop uh, at least in our operation, which is historically unutilized resource and possibly in the area an underutilized resource, and and if we're honest, it's a a world-class natural resource, it's very much in demand by the American consumer. Um, green energy is here, whether or not you're a a proponent of that, it's here. The there's consumers out there that want this, and it it's here, it's available. And it just makes sense to us to go ahead and develop it, it's it's very similar to the the Bakken Oil Field in North Dakota. Um, it's there, let's develop this, I I I would hope that the that the commission would move forward with this and uh, uh, give this project some life.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Um, for your comments, uh, Nate Martin?
Thank you, uh, my name's Nate Martin, I'm the Executive Director of Better Wyoming, uh, also a Laramie resident, I live at two sixty North Cedar Street. Uh, Better Wyoming is an organization that, uh, among other things, supports renewable energy development in the state. We do, we support clean energy and other climate change mitigation strategies. Uh, we support diversifying Wyoming and uh, county level tax bases and uh, you know, economic development that provides green jobs. We were involved in uh, supporting the Rail Tie project um, in in the, in the face of opposition from uh, rather well-financed folks who live around uh, that, the area where that's going to be built. And um, it it, through the process of doing that, it became clear that even though folks who lived around that project were um, you know, some of them were against it. Broadly, in Albany County, um, people support wind energy development, they support, like I said, um, green energy, fossil fuel, free energy production, and you know, finding new ways to bring in revenue to the county to fund our essential services that serve everyone, so we didn't uh, try to rally anybody to come and show up and bombard you all. Uh, the meeting is running uh, rather long as it is, um, but you know, I figured I would just kind of show up and, you know, voice my experience talking to folks in the community. I think that, I think most people in Albany County uh, support this kind of development. Obviously, we have concerns about, you know, if if we don't want to harm the mule deer. You know, I spent eleven days mule deer hunting this year, and it's a, that's important to me, but um, hopefully that you all can sort that kind of thing out, um, and uh, that's all, I just wanted to kind of speak up for for the project, definitely in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, appreciate that. Ms. Abernathy, do you have another question, comment?
I have another comment, and I have an, I believe another question, actually, um, one thing, I think that the wind turbines are aesthetically not great. Why don't they paint them green or sand color or something that kind of blends them into the, to the um, uh, environment a little more closely, I don't know ecologically if you can do that because of eagles or whatever. Um, and you know, I'm old enough, I can't remember, oh, my address, I'm in Cody. So that's why this is a very valuable meeting to me. Uh, because I can sit in on it. Thank you, that's all.
Thanks, Ms. Ab- um, Abernathy, appreciate your comments. Um, not seeing any more hands raised. I'll go ahead and close this to a public comment. Um, any discussion with um, members of the uh, planning board, uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, the only thing that I had thought of is, and and I spend a lot of time on the road here and there. Uh, TD flats uh, during the winter has become an elk, elk, elk ground now, and and after the construction phase, it wouldn't surprise me in the least to find that mule deer actually like the area around the the turbines, uh, elk certainly do once you're uh, north down in the flat from Medicine Bow. And with that, it's back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. uh, Hanning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, well, I guess there's no motion on the floor, so I, I'm, I'm still struggling with the wildlife impacts cumulatively and that there's an absence of information uh, to fully understand what we're not allowed to require um, because of little uh, Roman numeral, Roman numeral six wildlife impacts that we can't look at. Um, but I, but I can't help but feel like knowing more about the wildlife impacts ultimately. Um, not, not only the the mule deer, but the the bald eagles and the various raptors and the bats, I love bats for mosquito season and for keeping down West Nile virus. Um, I'm, I'm wondering how the wildlife aspect ties into our making a finding necessary for approval under number two. Um, that we have to be able to say that the the project will not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and I I see this riparian area and um, the wildlife aspect as being integral to the welfare of our community, and so I'm, I'm, I'm afraid until I can get more information, I I would have to abstain from the vote at this time if if someone makes a motion in the affirmative. I'm for wind projects, but I, uh, and um, I'm very for wind projects, but I I think our county has to think about the cumulative impacts of all of them, and if we're gonna have any any wildlife corridors, uh, aerial and terrestrial that are contiguous and intact, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning, Mr. Hinckley? Yeah, I I'm, I think like, like many of us that live in Wyoming, the the landscape is what I love most about my native state, uh, and wind development is a, is a industrialization of landscape, so uh, the idea of blending in a six hundred foot tower, nice idea, but I think that's kind of risible. Um, but as we went through with Rail Tie, I think on balance, uh, this is the right direction for society, I'm not willing to turn off my lights. Uh, looks to me like these guys have done a very credible and thorough and responsible job, I appreciate the presentation, Mr. Marston. Uh, so I'm in favor of this, uh, kind of wish there were some miracle that would get everybody off the hook, but there isn't. Uh, to speak to Commissioner Hanning's point, um, and maybe you can weigh in on this, uh, Mr. Gurch. The Albany County wind regs are under revision, so some of these provisions may be adjusted as we go forward. Cumulative impacts are always important, um, but I say on balance, um, and it is a balance. I think that this is the right direction for our county and uh, and for the energy development of our country. So thank you for the, for the good project, I will, I will be happy to support it. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hinckley, all right, at this point, I'm looking for um, an uh, approval of this application, the denial of this application or a tabling of this application and a motion from a member of this planning commission. Don't everybody jump at once, you know?
Well, this is Kennedy, and I'm on the road, I, I read through all of the packet and noted my points, but I don't have a script in front of me, so I'd appreciate, I'd be happy to second someone, but I'm not in a position to move it.
What are the right words here? I I I would move that we approve the application as submitted. Uh, you, based on the uh, staff report with the exception of striking condition number two, which I understand to be superfluous. And changing the should in condition eight to shall, is that a, if that's a coherent motion, I'll accept a second.
Second, Kennedy.
Sounds very good, all right, we'll go ahead and uh, vote on this, um, Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
I abstain.
Uh, Mr. uh, uh, Hinckley?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore and myself, I, motion carries, congratulations, this application will move on to the Board of County Commissioners. And thank you for your presentation, that was very informative and uh, good luck.
We'll move on. Chairman, thank you so much, I really appreciate your time and uh, and the discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Marston, appreciate everything. Um, we'll move on to curb planning projects, um, David, would you give us an update on regulation changes?
Yeah, so um, I've been working with the county attorney's office to uh, make the changes to split the preliminary and final plats out. Um, at this point, we don't have a final product for you to review, um, but that is in process. Um, and I think that's all I had to report, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gurch. Um, since this meeting's gone on for as long as it is, maybe we'd have some discussion, but I think night's probably not the night to do that. So we'll just move on, if that's okay with everybody else. We'll move on to other items and announcements, um, our next meeting will be December eighth, twenty twenty-one, at two P M. Um, we'll conduct that on Zoom again. And um, now I'll open this up to any other citizen comments, anybody from the uh, public has any comments, please raise your hand, I'm looking at the participants list right now, and I don't think we're going to. Um, but I will just ask if anybody in the public has anything to say that is non agenda-related on today's packet, if there's anything anybody would want to say. It doesn't look like, it looks like everybody left us, so I'm gonna go ahead and close that. And um, with that being said, do I have a motion to uh, in this meeting?
Kennedy, so move, we adjourn.
You don't need a script for that?
For some reason or another, not, I I can't get that sentence out of my mouth.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kennedy, thanks for joining us, even though you're on the road, I know it was probably difficult, and uh, thanks to Ms. Hanning and Mr. Hinckley for um, your contributions to today's meeting, I know it was long, and I know that these are tough and hard to do sometimes, but appreciate the engagement and the conversation back and forth, do I have a second? Oh, I'll, I'll say, despite the lack of findings, I'll go ahead and second. All right, thank you, thank you, so I'll call roll, roll in this meeting, and Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore and myself, aye, and uh, we will talk to everybody, see everybody next month. Take care, have a nice Thanksgiving. Take care. Have a nice Thanksgiving. Take care.
Thank you all.
Thanks, all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.